Good evening. Welcome to the June 9th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please. Councilmembers Draymond?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Quintero?
Here.
The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Najarian and the invocation by Rabbi Rick Schechter, Temple Sinai. You all please rise, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Thank you, Arti. Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, and honored citizens, let us pray. Dear God, Source of life, we pray for the well-being of our Glendale community and our city council. May your blessings rest upon the members of our city council. Grant them a clear vision for our city that is both wise and kind. Guide them in their positions of leadership and responsibility so that our community may be an example of justice and compassion in the world. Deepen our love for our Glendale community and our desire to serve it. Strengthen our power of self-sacrifice for our city's welfare and teach us to uphold its good name by our own right conduct. And please cause us to see clearly that the well-being of our community is in the hands of all its citizens. Dear God, we give thanks for the opportunity to serve. May we walk in the light of your presence and use all of our powers for blessing. Together we say, amen.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian, may we have your report?
The agenda for the June 9th, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, June 4, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, what's next?
Next is presentation and appointments under III on the agenda, and a three is the agenda preview for the meeting of June 16, 2009.
Mr. McFaul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, on June 16, we'll begin at 9:30 in the morning with a budget study session. This will be on the citywide budget. We'll hopefully wrap up some direction from the city council. There is no specific action items on the Housing Authority or the Redevelopment Agency, but we do have a couple of joint meetings. The first will be a city council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency with two items. The first is a report from the Director of Development Services regarding an amendment to the cooperation and reimbursement agreements between the city of Glendale and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency for the Central Glendale and the San Fernando Road Quarter redevelopment project areas. This will include two items to amend these agreements. The second is from the Director of Development Services regarding the execution of a First Amendment to the agreement with Clear Channel Outdoor to allow Clear Channel's advertising structure located north of the I-5 and 134 freeways to remain for an additional five years in accepting the billboard from the Glendale Municipal Code in exchange for Clear Channel's removal of 15 other billboards throughout the city. There will then be a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority, of which there is again two items. The first is from the Directors of Planning and Public Works and the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power and the Acting Director of Community Development Housing regarding a policy establishing priority for water and sewers for affordable housing to lower-income households as required by the government code. Next, the Acting Director of Community Development Housing and the Director of Parks Recreation Community Services will be providing a report on shared housing, the shared housing program. At the Glendale City Council meeting that night, there are a number of action items and hearings. The first, the Director of Public Works has a report regarding a banner request from Glendale Sunrise Rotary for the use of city poles and light standards. The next, the interim Acting Director of Community Development Housing with a fresh air ordinance and community outreach update. The next is a report from the Director of Administrative Services, which is the 2009-10 GAN appropriation limit report. This is in relation to the city, adoption of the city's budget. Then there will be hearings. First will be a hearing on the city's budget. The proposed budget from the city of Glendale will be facilitated by the Director of Administrative Services Finance. Next is the Director of Planning with identification of designated historic districts through the implementation of a historic district gateway sign program. And then there are three Mills Act hearings. The first is for a property at 1675 Art Even. I know I've said that wrong. I've heard it pronounced correctly, but Art Even is how I've said it for 32 years. Next will be a Mills Act hearing for 1535 North Pacific Avenue, and then lastly, a Mills Act hearing for 1455 Royal Boulevard. That would be it.
Thank you, Mr. McFaul. Next?
At 3B is appointment of Mr. Art Simonian to Design Review Board Number One.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would, I put forth the nomination of Mr. Art Simonian. He is currently a sitting DRB member, and he may even be chair, if I'm not mistaken. He is a USC graduate, received his degree in architecture and his master's in real estate development, and he's done a very solid job in the DRB, and we've seen actually one of his projects a year or two ago, a sensitive hillside design. And I would, with the concurrence of the council, I would put his name forth for approval.
Second? Okay, any comments? Roll call, please. Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, Mr. Najarian.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my second nominee is Mr. Michael Giragos, who lives in the Spar Heights area. He has served one term on the DRB. I thought, done a very good job, very thoughtful in his comments. He graduated from the University of Oregon, and we beat them every year, Mr. Weaver, so we should cut him some slack on that. He did receive his Bachelor's of Architecture and, again, is a very thoughtful member of the DRB, sensitive to the community issues as well as design features.
Second? Comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Mr. Kasakian?
At T is appointment of Mr. Ivan Insua to Design Review Board Number One. This was a nomination brought forth by Mayor Quintero.
Okay, I nominate Ivan Insua. He's also a licensed architect, has been in the city for many years, a member of the American Institute of Architects, and most important to me, he's also a Leeds-certified architect and served on the DRB with distinction. He does an excellent job, so I nominate Mr. Insua.
I'll second that.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. My second nomination is Alan Malikian. Lived in the city since '82. Got his degree in, as an architect, also a member of the AIA, and served with distinction on the board. He's done numerous buildings all over Southern California.
Mayor, would you like a city clerk to read it into the record?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kasakian, I'm jumping ahead.
Sorry, it's item 3E, and it's appointment of Mr. Alan Malikian, as people may have guessed, for Design Review Board Number Two.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Roll call? I need a second. There was, okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
3F is nomination assignment for the Arts and Culture Commission. This is to Councilmember Friedman. And at G is nomination assignment for the Building and Fire Board of Appeals. Again, Councilmember Friedman. There is at H a nomination assignment to the Glendale Water and Power Commission. This is for Councilmember Draymond. And at 3I is nomination assignment for the Commission on Status of Women, Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put Grace Walker nomination for reappointment next week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver. What's next?
Next is City Council and staff comments.
Comments? Mr. Weaver?
I have a few this time. One, I don't want everybody to think it's because of this last one, but it's accumulation over months that I've got emails on this subject, and I think that the council ought to look at it again in that regards of vinyl windows. I clearly understand in historic districts the application of window treatments, but in other cases, I do know what causes administrative headaches for staff trying to judge when they have administrative capability to approve a window or send it to a designer view. It's costly to the homeowner that is simply trying to change out a window, so if one of my colleagues agree, I'd like to just discuss it. I'm not saying how the vote would go, but I'd like more input on that, if a colleague would agree.
I would be happy to endorse putting that on the agenda. I'm not saying that I would necessarily agree, but I think we do need to discuss it and look at it.
Same way.
Okay.
Another thing I'd like to talk about, I've read hundreds and hundreds of daily, of the news press, Glendale, and sometimes, I understand First Amendment rights, and you can write and say just about anything you want, even here at the podium, but there's things that I wish like the news press would cover that they don't. Things I read in the Daily News the last week, great article in the Smart Grid, now it's coming into effect. I haven't seen that covering Glendale. Paul Krikorian represents our area. He's opened, he's rented an apartment in Los Angeles area, so he may consider running for Los Angeles City Council. Not covered in our paper at all. The Chrysler Jeep dealer in Glendale is not going out of business. He's going to be remaining as a used car dealership, perfect mint condition. Big article in the Daily News, nothing in the news press on that that I could see. And I called them the other day about a woman who's been in business for 40 years and is retiring. And I called to give them the story, it might be a good article to run, and the woman's never been called. But they do seem to write things that I think the news press ought to check the validity of the comments. I know for one that I have, if I've ever written anything, I've been called to ask to say, is that a fact? I have received calls on other people asking if what somebody's written is a fact. But then you read editorials in the paper, like the one that wrote, "The Americana has brought more crime to Glendale." Now, I don't know where somebody can get the information to say that, and then when they start out and say, "The interim chief, Ron DePampa, does not represent the most knowledgeable officers in the Glendale Department. He not only fails to interpret simple statistic data, statistical data, he also shows poor detective skills." Now, the press prints that. I think that's uncalled for. You can print something, but I bet if anybody asked him to show the proof, the facts, that the Americana has increased the crime we've had in Glendale, I'd like to see that. Another one I got, this case by Mr. Milano, he has one statement in here, "Even more bizarre is that salary negotiations are between the city manager, the human resource director, and the city union representatives. All of them stand to gain from their own self-serving arrangements. The city council just rubber stamps the agreement after the fact." Now, that is an absolute falsehood. The press prints it. Does anybody check? I've been involved in negotiations 13 years. That is not how it operates. It's not how it goes down, but he prints it, and the news press prints it. I think that is wrong. New writer for the press now castigates us for laughing at Herbert Milano last week. Well, over time, he's called us corrupt. He's called us having the hands in the pockets of developers, that the associations in this city get pay raises for their support of us, financial support. He has sued me personally. He has sued the city of Glendale, and he writes more articles in the news press than some of the paid employees. People said, is he employed by the news press? So he makes statements sometimes, sometimes, that are not factual because he does not have all the information with which to make it. And people ought to understand, communications is a two-way street. You have a perfect right to get up here and say anything you want about us, to print it in the written media, whatever, but as citizens of Glendale, we all have a perfect right to say what we want also, without being chastised for exercising our right. Yes, sitting up here seems to give us more power, but we're residents and citizens of this city, and we have the same right as anybody else. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Draymond?
On a much happier note, Mr. Mayor, I do have three items. One is about the last weekend, the 26th Annual Montrose Arts and Crafts Festival, last Saturday and Sunday. So actually, as I look out in the audience, I saw many of you there, and I saw a number of my colleagues there and city staff there, and about 35,000 other people over the weekend. It was a hugely attended event, and it usually is, but I think the weather was so pleasant, cool, and comfortable that many, many, many more people turned out to spend a long period of time visiting and making purchases and dining in the restaurants, shopping in the stores, and having a great time with their families. I want to thank the public for attending a city event. That is to say, not a city-sponsored event, but an event, a public event in our city. I firmly believe, Mr. Mayor, that all of our city's public events help to make a better city because it helps us create a sense of community. So that was one item. The second item is our Glendale History Challenge. As some of you may know, if you're sitting out there or look in from time to time to these council meetings, we have a Glendale History Challenge going on. We show a photograph of a historic building or place or personage of note or an iconic landmark in the city of Glendale, and we ask people to either call in or email us to give us the name of the site and the year that the photo was taken. And so this, we've had three photographs up, and Mr. Mayor, the last one, which was a repeat of the week before, has still stumped the public. There it is again. And so after two go-arounds, and by the way, the winner gets a $25 gift certificate to restaurants in our city, and the restaurants don't pay for it, yours truly does. The idea is to get people to watch our council meetings and also to go out and spend a little time and money out in our businesses. So I will just tell you, since we're not going to offer this one up again, that this is the Hotel Glendale, Hotel California, pardon me, which doesn't exist any longer. It's Brand Boulevard at California, makes sense, California Hotel. We thought it would be pretty obvious since the big tower says California, and the front of it says California Hotel, and there's the California Room and the California Theater on the ground floor of it, but it just didn't happen. So in any case, beautiful old building, piece of Glendale history, gone seemingly forever, but not forgotten. So let's go back and look at tonight's Glendale History.
Tell them what the on top is.
It's a tower. It's a radio tower, actually.
Oh, it was. Somebody told it was a blimp.
Well, they thought it was the hotel across the street. Let's take a look at tonight's Glendale History Challenge, another Glendale iconic landmark. Building is still there. Business is long gone, but many will remember it. So let's take a look. If you know the name of the business and you know the approximate year, you can call Chuck Wyke at our library at 818-548-2042, or you can email him at C.Wyke, W-I-K-E, at CI.Glendale.CA.us. Yes, ma'am? Oh, the year of the other one, of the other photo, well, let me come back to that so I don't confuse the public on this one. That's the photograph one more time. And then again, the person you'd want to contact, if you know the answer, Chuck Wyke, 818-548-2042 at our library, or you can email Mr. Wyke at C.Wyke@CI.Glendale.CA.us and tell the name of the location and the year that you think that photo was taken. I would mention that the previous photo, the one of the Hotel California, was, the photograph was, that particular photograph was taken in the late 1940s. And the only other rule is you have to wait till the end of the council meeting to call in. Okay. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, I have a small public announcement. I have brought a prop.
Oh, I forgot that. You did.
This is perhaps the world's smallest birthday cake.
Glad you remembered.
There we are. We have a birthday to celebrate.
Yes.
On this dais.
You've got to be a.
I'm going to violate a fire regulation.
I forgot all about it, Frank.
There we go. I'll have you know that on Sunday, our mayor celebrated his 39th birthday.
Forty.
And so, so, Mr. Mayor, happy birthday from your colleagues on the city council and staff.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I guess I better.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, like, boy, that was a talk, oh, who's that cake for?
Frank, would you do me a favor and tell the audience the little story you told me when you were born?
Oh, yeah. On my birthday.
Listen to this.
My dad was flying a B-29 over Japan, and on a bombing run came.
Most people use historic.
Came back, came back to the island of Tinian, this small South Pacific island, and there he got the telegram from my mom and aunt and so forth, that he had a son, so that's how my dad, I won't tell you what year, but you figured it out, the Second World War, 1945, and that's how my dad heard about his son, who was named after him. So anyway.
Nice story.
Yeah, this is very, very surprised. Thank you very much, all of you, and I'll blow it out, and my wish is.
Don't tell us, or it won't come through.
Pertains to this meeting tonight, so, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Well, I'll leave it there. I'll leave it there for a while.
Take it home to your wife.
Any other, any other comments? Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three of us attended the Glendale Student Showcase performances at the Alex Theater. Mr. Mayor, you were there, and Councilmember Friedman, I as well, and we got the treat to listen to some of the great talents in our local school district, everything from drum lines to dancers to string quartets. Quite an exceptional group of young artists we have progressing through our Glendale school system. So I wish them all the very best, as well as all their instructors, teachers, administrators, board members at the GUSD. So thank you all.
No? Okay, yes, I did attend it, and the little kids, especially in the showcase, the little stars are just really having a good time. In addition, they're really performing really well, and the teachers that work so hard. Then also, the Glendale Arts Council had an event on Sunday at Portos. It was very well-attended. Ms. Friedman was there, and I want to thank the Glendale Arts Council, they're certainly doing some good work. And today, at lunch, the Glendale Chamber of Commerce installed, I was the installing officer, and installed the president, officers, and the board, and it was a great event at the new embassy suites. And that's all I have. Mr. Kasakian?
At 5 is consent items. The following routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
Okay, I don't have any cards.
Mr. Mayor, I will move the consent count.
I have a second.
Second?
Okay, roll call, please. Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
Next would be oral communications.
Okay, I have two cards for presentations. The remainder of the cards will be moved to the end of the meeting, and if you have any cards to turn in on the action items and the hearings, that would be item 8A, 8B, 8C, 9A, please turn them in. All right, we'll start with Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Library and the Glendale Library. As I mentioned last week, we're having a children's reading program for children from up to age eighth grade, and that's co-sponsored by the Friends of the Library, the Los Angeles Dodgers, and Chivas USA Soccer League. And we've extended that to all adults, adults as any teenagers, all adults, at every branch library and the central library, there's going to be a special reading program for them as well. So here's your chance to take advantage of this summer and do some summer reading. Now, we have our next formal event, the Author Artists and Friends Series, which I chair, is set for June 18. And we have another fine program, Conversations with Frank Gehry, and this is a biography, oral biography written by Barbara Eisenberg. Barbara Eisenberg is associated with USC. She's Associate Director of the Los Angeles Humanity Society, and she's been interviewing off and on Frank Gehry for the last 20 years, and all that is in the book of Conversations with Frank Gehry. Now, that should be great, and he's a USC graduate, and we ask God of loyalty for all USC alumni in this area to consider attending this event. We also ask all architects to consider attending this event because Frank Gehry is a world-class, if not the world-class, architect. He's done the Disney World, he's done the famous museum in Spain, he's done them all over the world. And it's a real privilege and pleasure to have someone of the status of Barbara Eisenberg talk about Frank Gehry. Now, I have, I would ask first of all that if we can make contact with this Design Review Board, maybe some of these architects on this Design Review Board could be personally invited to come, and I brought flyers, not just for you, but for anybody else like the Design Review Board personnel, to attend this event. That's June 18, 7 o'clock, Central Library. I have to caution people who come, I usually say parking is validated. Well, parking is validated for those who park at the parking structure near the marketplace, but beyond that, parking is now enforced as far as one-hour limitations in the parking lot adjoining the libraries. lot adjoining the libraries. So, please don't make the mistake that a couple people made last time when we had Mark Erax and Ara Janigian giving their talk a couple weeks ago. So, that's the situation. Come, enjoy yourself. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to take them. And I have handouts for Barbara Eisenberg.
I already can pass it on to the DRB.
Already did.
Oh, okay, great.
If we need more, I can give them to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Karin Haratunian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. And I'm here to remind and to invite everybody again to our historic sporting event for this Friday, the Glendale Glory Professional Boxing Event at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. Doors, I have a few flyers here. Doors open 7 o'clock. The first bout will start at 8 o'clock. We're going to have music, food. All our local athletes have been training hard, and they're ready to compete in front of their hometown fans. And there's been a lot of excitement in the community. And I am personally very proud and happy that it is finally here. And I'm confident that we're going to have a great show and a great sporting and community celebration. So, I invite everybody to show their support for our athletes and our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's next, Mr. Kasaki?
Next is action items. And at 8A is Director of Human Resources regarding proposed urgency ordinance amending the supplemental benefits ordinance for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the City of Glendale for their compensation. At 8A1 is urgency ordinance for introduction, Glendale Police Officers Association, GPOA. At 8A2 is urgency ordinance for introduction, Glendale City Employees Association, GCEA. At 8A3 is urgency ordinance for introduction, Glendale Firefighters Association, GFFA. At 8A5 is urgency ordinance for introduction, 8A4 is urgency ordinance for introduction, Glendale Management Association, GMA. At 8A5 is urgency ordinance for introduction for executives. And at 8A6 is urgency ordinance for introduction, City Council.
Okay, I have a number of cards. Mr. Drayman?
Well, I would just like to pull, request to pull, Mr. Mayor, 8A, 5, and 6 for some explanation.
Okay, yeah, I was going to have Mr. Starburg let the public know what these ordinances are about. Or, in the alternative... Mr. Doyle, Director of HR.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, these are ordinances which reflect the additional expenses brought forth by the medical insurance renewals for the employees who are covered by our health insurance plans. You see a separate ordinance for each employee group, one for the, one each for each of the represented groups. And then, because our executives and city council members are both covered under those plans, there's a number five and six which reflect those, those two groups. Each year, we do a renewal of our medical insurance costs. We have a broker that negotiates with our medical insurance carriers. And typically, those costs rise. On the average, they rise at a greater pace than general inflation. And essentially, this, this reflects our efforts to negotiate those costs or keep them to a minimum. And again, it's something that's done and takes effect June 1st of each year. That's why, why this is being brought forth at this time.
And these ordinances reflect the existing cost-sharing arrangements with each of the employee groups embedded in the current contracts.
That's correct.
This has done an increase in, in at least the coverage.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right, I'll go to the public. Al Hoffman, followed by Mike Mohill.
Mayor Quintero, council, staff, Al Hoffman, resident of Glendale. I wasn't sure what the ordinance was all about. He explained it being for the medical insurance. I guess that's different than just an out-and-out compensation increase, which I was worried about because we just can't afford those now anymore. It must be nice to have your medical paid for. When my insurance went up for my medical coverage for my employer, I had to pay the increase. And so, it's really great and lucky for people that work for the city to have that kind of coverage. Sure be nice if all of us could have that, but that isn't how it works. My medical increases go up every year, even when I'm retired, they go up. So, there we are. So, all of you city employees, you're really lucky. Thank you.
Mike, Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify again, city employees do pay for the additional costs of medical insurance. As the report states, there's a cost-sharing arrangement. It's contributory on behalf of the employees. The non-management employees pay 50% of the increase, the city pays the other half. For the managers and up, it's 90%, 10%. But there is a contribution by employees to those costs, as well as the retirees on our plan pay the full amount of any increases.
Okay, thank you. Mike Mohill, followed by Barry Allen.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, Lord Freeman, council lady. Congratulations. The rest. I don't get it. We're in the middle of a major recession. I have never seen it this bad in all my life. I was in sales for 27 years. And when my insurance went up, my employer, he just passed it on to me. He didn't absorb it. When my 401K went down, he didn't make up the difference. I didn't have CalPERS. People are being laid off left and right today, and city employees can't afford to pay more insurance. What's going on here? I call these city spoiled children. I'm living on Social Security, $1,200 a month. When my gasoline goes up, nobody gives me a pay raise. I'm told that Social Security will not be going up this year, payments. But inflation's be going up. Thank you to the unions and the bosses in Washington, DC. And now, we have trickled down. Now, how much longer do we have to be put up with these ridiculous insurance, be it medical, doctor, whatever they want to call it? The time is over. The gravy train is over. We don't have the revenue coming in anymore. Look at our sales taxes. Look at brand, look at the brand avenue of cars. Their sales revenue. Nissan and Infiniti combined their service manager. Americana sales are down. Hey, they're trying to give away the condos. And I love the Americana. I'm glad that Montrose did well this weekend, Mr. Mayor, Montrose. It's good to see we got some revenue coming in. But expenses need to be cut down. And this, the mere thought that the city employee would want the taxpayers to pick up the difference, shame on you if you go ahead and approve it. Thank you.
Barry Allen, followed by Herbert Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. Looking at the items, 8A1 through 6, even though 5 and 6 have been temporarily pulled or going to be discussed separately, I noted that $451,000 is what this will cost the city in addition to whatever else that we're paying, according to the staff report. I would suggest that this is an excellent opportunity to start renegotiating contracts like this, to see that, in fact, in looking at some of the detail, it looks like there's a $10,000 fund that will reimburse employees of certain levels for whatever their out-of-pocket copays are. And of course, that's paid for as well. And I think that something earlier that Mr. Weaver said when he spoke about negotiations, and this is the way it works, I think the public really should participate by viewing the negotiations with any labor contract. After all, it is the public's money that's being spent, and we really should see how it's being spent and what the negotiations look like. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero. Happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you.
Members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. As part of the memorandums of understanding that are included in this particular agenda item, it's embedded the pension that the, to which the city and the employees contribute under CalPERS. It is my contention that this particular pension plan, as you have it set up now, is an unsustainable plan for the residents of Glendale, for the taxpayer, and for the city. Glendale taxpayers guarantee a 7.75% return on CalPERS investments. When CalPERS investments tank, the taxpayer pays for their mistakes. We pay through budget cuts, service cuts, and increased utility rates. When the economy tanks and CalPERS returns fall far below projections, the taxpayer pays again. Whenever you increase the payroll or the benefits and the future obligations, we also have an upward trend on this particular contribution to CalPERS. Here is a history of the CalPERS contributions by the City of Glendale. I started, I took a 15-year gap here between 1994, '95, '96. The amounts hovered around $5 to $6 million. In 2001, 2002, we basically have almost zero contributions because they were based on the returns by the investments made by CalPERS during the tech boom. And as you know, that was also a, an economic bubble. Based on that economic bubble, on April 3rd of 2001, three brand-new councilmen received and approved these changes to basically increasing by a third in the pension obligations that the city would then give to the safety personnel. But as you can see, that the future impact of those particular pension obligations are incredibly huge. So, now for the year 2010, it is expected now and budgeted for the general fund alone at $17 million. And they have been increasing at the rate of $1 million a year. What we have done in essence is reduce the time at which individual employees are retiring at the age of 50 at the earliest, with a potential lifespan of about 30 years, and many of them earning well over six figures over that period of time. California's budget is already heavily impacted by it, and Glendale's budget will be heavily impacted in the future. And we can see that the way that we are now managing to pay when there are no sufficient revenues coming in from property tax or sales tax is through the increase in the Glendale Water and Power rates that we're paying. And of last year in July, a study made by the City of Roswell, California, found Glendale to be the second highest in the whole set of California and with the highest commercial electric rates. The burden of this particular plan is being paid for by the Glendale residents and the stakeholders. I wish you revise it. Thank you.
Well, before anyone comments, the issue at hand is the benefit ordinance and specifically the medical insurance.
Well, I was going to ask, Mr. Starburg, is there anything in any of these actions about pensions?
No.
Okay, any other comments before someone introduces the ordinance? Other comments? No? Mr. Weaver?
Can I make a motion? I'd like to introduce 8A1 through 4.
All right, the ordinance at 1A through 4 has been introduced, and about 5 and 6.
You pulled those separately?
They'd be pulled because I wanted to have some further clarification, but we started with further clarification.
Are you okay, then?
Yes, I wanted the, I just wanted the clarification. I wanted, just finish. I just wanted to clarify, and I wasn't, it's, has nothing to do with whether I agree or disagree with Mr. Milano on his presentation. It's just that it has nothing to do with, that I can see, this issue has nothing to do with CalPERS or pensions. So, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not understanding the hook there or the connection there. But in any case, I had asked to pull 5A, 5, and 6 just simply for clarification. Whenever I see anything that looks or think the public may look upon as a salary increase or a raise or a benefit increase to executives, and in this case, to the council, I wanted a clarification. And since we now know that there, this is a participatory, medical benefits, not salary per se, anyway. Thank you.
If that's okay, then I'll introduce 8A, 5, and 6 to introduce, yes.
Okay, the ordinances have been introduced. What's next?
At 8B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding approval of eight new or expanded Glendale Water and Power public benefit programs. At 8B1 is a resolution approving eight new or expanded public benefit programs and to receive energy-efficient conservation block grant funds in support thereof.
Mr. Starburg?
Yes, let me go to Glenn Steiger, General Manager of GWP, for the staff report. Glenn?
Mayor Quintero, members of the Glendale City Council. Glendale Water and Power has an opportunity to take advantage through the Department of Energy, of Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grants in the approximate total of about $1.8 to $1.9 million. And in doing so, we are proposing to expand our public benefits offerings by eight programs, which are in the report that you have, which will also be leveraged with existing funding from the public benefits funding. If you'd like, we can go through all the programs, but unless you have certain questions, leave it at that.
I'll start with, I have a question. Point number three, the energy efficiency audits and retrofits for large business. That's easy to understand. Why is small business not mentioned?
I'm going to ask Craig Keenan, who's responsible for our public benefits programs.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Craig Keenan, Public Benefit Programs Coordinator for Glendale Water and Power. Regarding small businesses, we have a, a small business program. We spend about $650,000 to $700,000 a year on that, on that program. The energy efficiency block grants wanted you to increase or have new programs, and we have more of a demand for the large business programs right now.
Well, you know, I heard that eight years ago when I was first elected, when I don't think GWP was doing any small business programs, so, and I'm not buying that one. Let me ask you this. Under this ARRA program, can we also work with small business? I know we're working with small business, but if we're increasing it for large business, why can't we do the same with the small business community? Certainly, there's many more small business owners than there are large companies in town.
There's no, no reason why we couldn't use funding for the small businesses. Like I said, our small business program is funded at $700,000 a year. We provide up to $2,500 in direct installs for, for participants. We get about 400, 500 participants a year. We've been doing that program for about five years. That program has now been copied by pretty much every public utility in the state of California and Edison. It's, it's a popular program.
Do you have enough money to continue?
We do have enough money.
Yeah. So, you don't need more money for the small business program?
No.
Could you use more money?
We don't. But in the way that the PBC programs are structured, if there was more demand, we could fund it through your, your existing authorization. We come back to you every two years. We give you a list of programs, what we think we're going to spend each year. And then, part of your authorization to us is we can move more funding in there if the demand is higher during any given year. Right now, we're... Right now, we're scheduled to spend about 600 of the 700,000 that we've budgeted this year for that program.
And then the large businesses, do you have any names in mind?
Well, we would target our top 200 customers for, for energy audits and retrofits. We're talking about customers that use more than, say, 5, 6,000 kilowatt-hours a year.
Okay.
They, they could be like the Galleria or the hospitals, or a lot of these company or businesses have already participated in our audit program, done a lot of the retrofits. The more medium, just smaller, large businesses need more help, and so that's what we would target.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Quintero.
With regard to the large business, the large business audit and retrofits, does that include the school district?
The school district.
Are they considered eligible for that?
We, we could do energy audits for them. They are considered a, a large business customer.
Do they need to ask us first, or do we impose our auditors upon them? What's the process with that?
We have.
Because there was an issue, the reason I raise this, there was an issue not too long ago about the, the city's cooperation with their energy program.
We've been meeting with them quite regularly, and that's, there's one program in here for, to replace refrigerators in their common areas. That came out of those meetings. That was a specific program they requested that we develop. They have about, well, they had a, a problem with personal appliances in the classrooms. It was using a lot of energy. They decided that they would adopt some guidelines to have those personal appliances removed. In exchange for that, we would help them upgrade their common areas with new refrigerators because their refrigerators are 10, 15, 20 years old, and that's one of the reasons why the teachers didn't want to use them. So one of the programs is to work with them to replace them with the new Energy Star models.
Is there a cost to the school district for those new refrigerators?
No. We would replace, we would replace them under our existing program. They cost about $580 per refrigerator, but they do pay for themselves in the energy savings. That program would also be offered to the city departments who need refrigerators changed out.
Well, that's good to see. As I said, there were some issues in the past about our.
Oh, we have a good relationship. We meet with them regularly, talk with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, this is certainly timely. As was mentioned, I guess last week, we'll be moving towards smart metering, which I think is going to be extremely helpful for homeowners and property owners in general in the coming years. Smart metering for electricity as well as water savings, so. Any other questions? All right. I have a motion.
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to move 8B1.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Straman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Njarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero. Yes. Next, please.
At C is City Attorney, considering, consideration of resolution, advocating amendments to the Telecommunications Act of 1996 to permit local governments to consider the health and environmental effects of radio frequency emissions from wireless communications facilities and support greater zoning powers for local government with regard to the placement of such facilities and communicating, same to the President and the U.S. Congress. At C1 is a resolution for consideration.
Mr. Starber.
Yes, I'll go to Chris Sansoni with City Attorney's Office. Chris.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is an item that you asked for last week to have us bring to you today. It is a request for the, our legislative analysts and for a resolution to be developed to ask Congress and our legislative and executive bodies in federal government to consider amending the Telecommunications Act, both for the regulation of radio frequency emissions as well as local zoning authority for the placement of wireless antennas. As we've discussed in the past, radio frequency emissions up to, to, are considered preempted, we are preempted from considering those radio frequency emissions when making decisions with regard to the placement of wireless antennas in the city. The FCC, Federal Communications Commission, is the body that has set forth regulations for these emissions and set forth the safety standards, and therefore, they've preempted the field entirely. When we go to develop our ordinance for wireless antennas, we have to be mindful of the fact that the city cannot regulate just based on the safety effects of radio frequency emissions. However, there have been additional studies that have been done since the FCC established their radio frequency emission standards. The latest update for the FCC was in 2001. Since then, there have been additional studies, some in Europe, some in Australia, some in New Zealand, that have shown there may be additional effects that should be studied. I've attached as Exhibit A to your staff report, a whole list of those studies, and if you look on the web, you can see there are abstracts of scientific studies that indicate there, there may be some additional room for study at the FCC level. And as long as those questions exist as to the adequacy of the federal regulations, local governments should still have the ability to consider the environmental effects of those facilities when considering applications for and during the approval process. The Los Angeles County and Los Angeles Unified School Districts have taken similar measures and directed their legislative advocates to press Congress to loosen preemption rules over local jurisdictions with regard to radio frequency emissions and also regard to the ability to regulate for safety concerns. Today, you have been, you've received letters and an attachment from the wireless industry. Two representatives joined up to send a letter to you, and they stated that this agenda item requests the repeal of the Federal Telecommunications Act pending further study of the health effects of radio frequency emissions. That's not the case. On the contrary, we're suggesting, we're not suggesting the FCC abandon its standards at all. But we do believe the standards and the conclusions of the FCC bulletin that was published in '97, as I mentioned, revised in 2001, should be updated to take into consideration the most recent studies. We recognize that user demand is skyrocketing, and that's all the more reason why health effects should be updated as an item of critical importance to public health. That concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions. If you have any speakers, I could answer questions before or after. At your pleasure.
Questions, please. We have a great undoing. Not right now, Ms. Sansoni. I do have three speakers. We'll start with Al Hoffman, followed by Elise Calfeyan.
Mayor Quintero, council, staff. Al Hoffman. I'm really in favor of this changing or modifying this, this ordinance, this Telecommunications Act, because we do need to study more of what's going on. And what she stated about studies being done with RF interference and what it does to people, we don't know. You know, they say talking on a cell phone all day may be a problem. We don't know. There's, the school's still out on all the effects that might happen. But what is important is that we be able to, at the local level, be able to define what a given carrier can do in the local area. And we need some real, I guess, smart decisions in what the frequencies are and what they can do, where communications equipment is installed, and why it has to be in a certain place. And we need some expert advice and opinion to determine this situation. And it should be in the Telecommunications Act revision that the local level has more input into the process. I think that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise Calfeyan, followed by Peter Floyd.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Elise Calfeyan. I want to thank Christina Sansone for the very careful analysis and research that she's done on these laws and on their age and the fact that they need to be updated. We strongly support her report. A speaker on this subject at last week's council meeting raised some questions about our advocacy, and I wanted to state for the record our group's three main problems with wireless installations in residential neighborhoods and why we support this resolution. The first problem is health and safety. One of the questions I had at first is, well, haven't we had broadcast and satellite transmissions for decades, and what's different about cell tower transmissions? There's got to be a big difference because since we set up our website, we have heard from so many communities that are fighting the same cell tower installations that we are, and everybody's concerned about it. One of them was an electrical engineer who has worked with the FCC. He was fighting a cell tower in Sherman Oaks, and so I asked him, well, how are satellite transmissions different from cell tower transmissions? And he sent me an email back saying, satellites are much further away, so their signals come to you at much lower power levels. The fact that they're both wireless is like saying that a sailboat and an oil tanker are both ships. So what's different about cell towers? Broadcast signals are very low frequency. Satellite signals are high frequency but weak by the time they get to ground level, and cell towers emit high-frequency microwaves and are close to ground level, so they're much more powerful. Now, as different company cell sites are installed in an area, the population is exposed to the combined radiation, while each provider only has to answer for its own site's emissions, and that's one of the problems that Ms. Sansone brought up. The second issue is technology. Wireless broadband is slower and less secure than wireline broadband and far slower than the fiber optic service that the telecom companies promised us as the information superhighway. Fiber optic cable is fully encased and emits no radiation. The city should be able to help its residents and its businesses get the best broadband technology available. The third issue is proliferation. This is another problem for neighbors. One company could lease a private site and install one of its cell towers there, while another company builds one across the street to compete for business. And I just read that AT&amp;T is having problems because the smartphone is creating too much of a burden on its network, so it's going to need to increase its capacity. Maybe it will want to build another series of cell towers in our neighborhoods as well. Companies should not be allowed to turn our neighborhoods into corporate battlegrounds for short-term profits, especially if their technology potentially threatens our health, our property values, and our views. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Floyd.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Peter Floyd, President of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners. I'm just here to commend you folks for taking a leading edge in fighting cell towers. The homeowner groups are following the issue, and I think we're all very pleased with the, with the leadership the council has shown. And as, as Elise said, it's an issue of local control, health, and, and science, so, you know, more power to that. The next step will probably be joining the L.A. County Board of Supervisors and LAUSD, as I understand it, to recommend changes in the state law. State Code, California Public Utilities Code, Section 709 is the statute, primary statute that allows utilities to use public city, government's rights-of-way for their business. And I was looking at a, at a government, at a industry publication this afternoon, and it said PUC Code 7901 is inconsistent, lengthy, and expensive, and that's from the industry. Many of us believe that that code is actually more restrictive, less favorable to cities than the federal code. So I would urge, hopefully, you will ask staff, if they're not already, working to develop a position and something that we can send to Sacramento on that. And again, finally, thank you very much for all your support in this matter, and thanks very much to GoAct. They've done a lot of heavy lifting, as I've read over a lot of the literature. They have been instrumental in, shall we say, persuading various government agencies to step up and take a position on these issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of the public comment. Any comments from the dais?
We did discuss as a link and asked for a resolution to be prepared for your signature. The motion talks about a resolution for consideration. I mean, we can adopt it by a vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the resolution is in your packet. It is noted on the agenda. It is for your consideration for adoption, either up or down. It accomplishes what the council asked last week, and that is to come back with a resolution expressing council's concerns about not only RF emissions and the ability of local agencies to regulate their right-of-ways, but also the need to study and update those studies on the effect, the health effects of radio frequency emissions. Last week, you voted on and approved a, a letter for the mayor to sign, which did go out Friday, and we properly served it, and promptly served it on time to the FCC, indicating our concerns with the, the upcoming broadband considerations at the Federal Communications Commission level. And so you are, at this point, free to adopt the resolution for you, which will be certified and, if adopted, would be sent to the, our local congressional representative, our United States Senators, the President, the members of the executive branch, and that would be the FCC, as well as any other interested party, enter public record.
Mr. Mayor, in that case, I'd like to move the adoption, the resolution of 8C1.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Straman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Njarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
Under hearings in 9, at 9A, is City Attorney regarding discussion regarding the placement of commercial wireless facilities in the city on consideration of an urgency ordinance extending a temporary moratorium on the placement of commercial wireless facilities in or near residential zones. 9A1 is motion issuing progress report, and 9A2 is an urgency ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Starber.
Yes, again to Ms. Sansoni. Chris.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is two items, a motion to issue this progress report, both the written and the oral progress report for the record, and urgency ordinance for introduction. As we noted in the staff report, there is a need to extend the current temporary moratorium on the placement of wireless antennas in residential zones and those areas that are in the public right-of-way within 1,000 feet of residential zones. The current moratorium is set to expire June 24th. The recommended extension is for an additional and final period of 12 months or until the effective date of the anticipated legislation, whichever is earlier. We're seeking the 12-month period, which is the greatest amount of time that is available under the law, for a second and final extension to the moratorium. We do not anticipate taking the full 12 months to complete the ordinance, but we recommend the full extension nevertheless to ensure that we have the maximum flexibility in presenting the ordinance to the community, to the industry, getting reviews, getting comments, making revisions if necessary before the ordinance is presented to both the Planning Commission and then eventually to the City Council. As part of the process of developing the ordinance, our city staff investigated all known sites, both in the field and in the city's documentary files, and collected information on, on all those antenna sites. They've produced a map, which is attached to your report, and in most locations, our, our staff who did the work used a spectrum analysis and radio direction techniques. There is no guarantee that this is a complete list. However, this is the, the best that we were able to find in locating all the cell sites. The industry is constantly changing. It's a very dynamic industry, as you know. So this is the best that we've been able to locate so far. There's 110 active sites in or adjacent to Glendale. Those that are not exactly in, within the boundaries of Glendale do have a sphere of influence over Glendale itself, so we added those to the list. Now, during the inventory, a number of facilities were found to be in violation of state and local codes, and the most egregious case I've set forth in your report, I'll just briefly summarize that. This was a wireless communications facility attached to a pole in a manner that substantially deviates from the plans that were provided to the city and then the, for the permit that was issued. It was a right-of-way antenna, and it also violates California Public Utilities Code General Order 95, which is intended to safeguard the public from unsafe pole attachments. In particular, in this particular case, there was a 90-degree rotation of the equipment on the pole from what was approved, and it was, there was substantially more equipment that was faced, on the face of the pole than was shown in the plans. The rotation of the equipment, the. The rotation of the equipment, the addition to the approved equipment, potentially placed out-of-line stresses on the pole itself. There were also improperly sized conduits that were installed on the pole, and portions of the cabling were improperly left outside of conduits. The antenna support crossarms were substantially above their permitted height and encroached into the protection zone adjacent to the power lines. The significant of this pole, of the pole-mounted electric boxes were hanging right over the right-of-way, the lowest portion of which was 8'5" above the curb, which is an unsafe height for the traveling public. This noncompliant antenna facility is a prime example of the urgent need to protect the public from dangers of unauthorized and noncompliant antennas on utility poles in the public right-of-way and in zoned properties. Presently, there are approximately nine pending applications for encroachment permits and four pending applications for conditional use permits that are on hold because of this moratorium, but our goal is not to take the full 12 months, as I mentioned. We would like to have the proposed ordinance ready for your review by the end of October. In the event that it's not ready because of comments, revisions, and the like, we will bring a report to you at that time indicating what we've done, what measures we've taken to date, and a timetable for future actions, including presentation of the final ordinance. Again, you have that letter that I mentioned in the former report from the telecommunications industry. You have additional letter from Moss and Associates expressing concerns over the effect of the moratorium. The letter of Moss and Associates specifies a particular site on Mesa Lila Road. We only received this letter at 5:00 today, so we will look into that site and determine whether it is actually subject to the moratorium, or if this is one of the items that's exempt from the moratorium. That letter also opposes local regulation of antenna placement based on the health effects of radio frequency emissions. It has to do with the former item, but I think we've addressed that sufficiently. Finally, the wireless telecommunications industry's letter has stated that this moratorium would set them back two to three years. We don't think that would be the end result. They did not consider that the moratorium is only for residential areas. There's no moratorium on commercial or industrial or open space areas, and the city is not refusing applications. We still take applications and consider them, process them to the point that we can. So that concludes my report. In the audience today is Jeff Melching from Rutan and Tucker. He's our outside legal consultant for telecommunications matters, and he is also here to answer any questions you may have on this. Thank you.
Ms. Friedman?
Thank you for that report. My question is, what's going to happen to those facilities, those towers that were found to be in violation?
Their letters are going out to, well, this is one particular item. The letter has gone out to them from Glendale Water and Power because the antenna attachment is on a power pole, and a plan for cure of the violations is currently in progress. In addition to that, that carrier is going to be inventorying all of their antennas in the entire city and providing us with a report to ensure that they are in compliance in all of their other antennas, and if they're not, they will be correcting them.
So if they're in violation, they're not going to be subject to the moratorium? In other words, they kind of get the right to come back to the same location?
That's correct. They are grandfathered. They were installed before the moratorium. The violations are being considered a code enforcement matter.
And my second question is, I understand that commercial and open space is not part of the moratorium, but is this something that, while we look at crafting a new ordinance, they'll still be within the envelope of that ordinance?
Yes.
Or is the new ordinance only going to deal with residential?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, it is true that the new ordinance that we're developing at this time will encompass all installations. There may be different standards or preferred locations such as industrial and commercial areas, but the entire ordinance will cover and specify requirements for the zoned areas, including industrial and commercial and open space.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go to the speakers.
Mr. Mayor, while the speaker's coming up, might I want to open the public hearing?
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. We have Clark Harris, followed by Miriam Nakamura.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Clark Harris. I'm with T-Mobile. I'm the Development Manager for Glendale, reside in Seagull Valley, California. Here before you this evening, just to make two quick points, what we're looking for is we'd love to be requested and look forward to participating in the process as the new ordinance is evolved and adopted, and also we'd like to also request that the council work with staff or request staff to do this in a most timely and efficient manner. And the timeline that was outlined to have it completed around October works well for us. We just would not like to see a drug out for a whole year. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Miriam Nakamura, followed by Patty Ringo.
Good evening. My name's Miriam Nakamura. I'm a resident of Pasadena. I am the person that spearheaded the fight for regulation in the city of Pasadena, and I think I'm going to start having a coughing fit pretty soon. June 12 will be the end of the two-year wireless telecommunications moratorium for the city of Pasadena and the beginning of the new telecommunications ordinance. The Pasadena telecommunications ordinance was an ordinance for both wireless telecommunications facilities and video and cable facilities. The final draft of the ordinance was rushed, unintelligible, and gave away too many of Pasadena's regulatory rights to the telecom industry. The staff spent most of their time explaining to the city council the difference between the laws regulating wireless facilities and cable. Glendale should keep their wireless facilities ordinance strictly for applications for wireless telecommunications facilities installations only and not combine it with video and cable applications. Thank you so much. By the second read of the Pasadena telecommunications ordinance, the filed draft of the ordinance was inadequate and was not protective for the residents of the city and gave away much of the local authority overseeing of the wireless facilities. The city of Pasadena, after meeting with AT&amp;T, requested that there be a cleanup ordinance scheduled for September 2009. Previously, there was talk by the staff of a cleanup ordinance in a year's time or amendment changes. Obviously, the Pasadena ordinance was not ready to be approved and enacted if staff is already talking about cleaning it up. There needs to be a need for public participation from the FCC website. It encourages, local governments are encouraged to include both the community and the industry in the development of local plans concerning tower and antenna sightings. There needs to be equal access to the staff. In order to keep the public and the industry on the same playing field, there needs to be equal access to the staff. The industry has an equal opportunity to approach the staff during agendized meetings. Private meetings with the staff do not seem fair because these meetings are closed to the public and could influence staffs in city council's decision-making. Community experts, the city of Glendale has a valuable and untapped resource, its community experts. They can add a lot to the discussion if participation is allowed and there is a dialogue between the staff, city council, and the community. There needs to be education for the public and the city council. It's necessary for both the public, as well as the city council, to have public workshops with questions and answers and a real dialogue that would create an ordinance that is a product of all parties involved. This issue is very complex, and the city of Pasadena voted on legislation, which they didn't really have a clear understanding of. There needs to be equal access in terms of the public's access to the staff. There needs to be adequate time for review. In the city of Pasadena, there are four days to review documents, and that was inadequate. You need at least two weeks to review the documents. In conclusion, homeowners need the protection of the local authority in order to preserve their property values. Pasadena and Glendale are both beautiful cities that need their city councils to protect and preserve our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Ringo, followed by John McMahon.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and city council members. I am Patty Ringo, and I am here on behalf of the California State Wireless Association, also known as CALWA. While CALWA understands the concerns and the events that have led you to consider the option of a 12-month moratorium, we respectfully ask that you not take such drastic action. Our organization is available to meet with cities and its residents at any time to work through issues and assist in the creation of ordinances and policies that are mutually beneficial. California has long been a leader in the United States, specifically in technology. The first ship-to-shore message, the first radio broadcast, the first television, the first laser, around-the-clock satellite communications, the first vacuum tube, the first internet node, all in California. 104 of the top 500 technology companies are based in California, and they're based here for a reason: our leadership and forward-thinking in the area of technology. Wireless communications can no longer be considered to be nonessential items. Homes that are wireless-only now number nearly 25%, and that is growing. First responders like police and fire, parents, businesses, children, all have come to rely heavily on their wireless devices. The benefits to the community are great, but that requires necessary infrastructure. The benefit of being able to see a child's first baseball game, or be there for an aging parent, and still be able to work remotely from your employer is a benefit to everybody. The fire department's ability to communicate with each other during major firestorms is also essential to a community, but this infrastructure that is necessary to support the needs of the consumer has to be installed. It isn't anymore just can I make a call, but can I always make a call, or can I keep my call active? These are more valid questions. Your network requires infrastructure, and if this infrastructure isn't there to support the traffic, the call cannot be made. Now, think about if that call were for a fire, or a sick child, or even something non-life-threatening, such as just a business deal that is important to your job or your company. That is what your carrier is trying to bring to your community: a solid network that delivers calls every time to everyone. A moratorium will give you time to rewrite an ordinance, but it will also block your city from progress. Mayor, city council members, you may not hear today from the silent majority that want to have reliable and quality service, but we do. They are loud and clear in their message, and they want better service. We can accomplish that without a moratorium. We can sit down at the table together while you continue to utilize what you already have in place. Crafting a new ordinance doesn't have to be a long, drawn-out, or painful experience. CALWA is here to support you and your needs. Let's pool our resources and come up with something that works for your community, as well as the industry and your constituents that want better service from their providers. Thank you.
Thank you. John McMahon, followed by Sean Scully.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, city attorney. I'll just start by saying I was never, and a couple times in with Miriam to Pasadena, offered a glass of water by anyone in Pasadena. So we're obviously a better city, based on that. My name is John McMahon. My address is 509 Cumberland.
That's okay.
There you go. Happy to say that's the location of the former proposed tower from T-Mobile, so thank you again for everyone who helped on that front. I'm here today because it's not just an issue about my house, and I came a couple months ago and talked about the Pasadena ordinance, started going to some of the meetings there and watching that. I think we can't help but look over the horizon at our sister city, sort of see this as an example, but, you know, they had two years' worth of extensions, and just to avoid any flowery language, it's a horrible ordinance. That time didn't give anyone a chance to get anything good on the books. So, you know, my take on that is be positive and look at this as what can we learn as Glendale residents from the people in Pasadena and their experience? So there's a couple takeaways, and I'll leave something behind that review them. That's from Glendale Organizing Against Cell Towers. But the first one is, there was a feeling of impropriety about the process, and that came about because the industry leaders were allowed to sit down with city staff, but when city residents tried to, they were directed to the city attorney, whose job is to say, hey, I represent the city, not you, so I'm sorry, you should go talk to someone else who sent them to him. So they kind of felt like they were caught in this sort of shell game. I also think, you know, one of the conclusions coming out of this is that there still are things undefined. When Miriam talks about cleaning up the ordinance, it's cleaning up the basic definitions in the beginning of the ordinance. And, you know, the problem is, what that leaves, and the city staff are saying there, they're the ones saying clean up the city staff, because they don't have guidance on the ordinance. And that's exactly the problem that we dealt with and that former Mayor Draymond mentioned, is that too many decisions are being left to city staff, having a discretion, and it was inconsistent. So I think, you know, they're left with that same problem at the end of it. There's two other points that are important. One is, the ordinance streamlines applications for city-owned property, and it doesn't differentiate whether that's in a residential area. So as a quick example, my son and I go to a park that's over here. It's like a fire-themed park across from the fire station on Harvard, and that park is city-owned property, but all around it are apartment and condo complexes where residents. So if there was an ordinance like this, a tower could be constructed there, and they would get, those people living there would get no warning at all. The second one is, on private land, the same thing could happen on private land. We moved from another house in Glendale. We lived on Glen Oaks. We lived on Howard Street, and if anyone knows right where Howard and Glen Oaks are, we're like one house down from there, our old house. There's a great deli there on the corner. That's a private piece of property. They could put up a tower there, and again, no notice. The other thing was just about the extension of the leases was so long in that ordinance. Some of them were like 20-year leases, and that's just too long for a city to lock in not knowing what technology sits out. So just a quick close, we could also be, the lady from the Wireless Association, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but mentioned about first, we could also be the first L.A. city to have a great wireless ordinance. That could be a great first for California. So here are some packets to summarize. Someone can pass them out. I think there's enough copies. Those points in better detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Scully. It's a final card.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sean Scully. I work with Patty Ringo. I'm with CALWA, the California Wireless Association. I'm on the regulatory committee, and I just wanted to echo some of the points she made. I come to CALWA from a public sector background. I spent over 20 years as a professional urban planner, working at jurisdictions around the state of California, and was involved with drafting many ordinances for the wireless industry to regulate them. And also, I was a part of many urgency ordinances, and I just want to speak directly to the item on the agenda tonight that's before you right now, with respect to the urgency of this ordinance. It appears that what has triggered this, and this is a requirement of the state law, that there is something urgent about the nature of wireless in the city of Glendale currently. But I would pose to you that apparently what has happened is there's been some issue with the safety with respect to some of the installations, let's say. And as Councilmember Friedman pointed out, code enforcement is there and available to deal with those, and we look forward to that being done, as well as the industry. It's not good for the industry to have anything that could be unsafe in the city. So with that, I would like to request, as a member of CALWA, and CALWA would like to request that those items that have been cited, that those notifications go out quickly so that we can respond to those, one. But also, the ordinance, the passage of this, or the extension of this moratorium, for reasons that are related to code enforcement, doesn't really make a lot of sense. We certainly have an ordinance on the books that we can work with, and we'd love to work with you, and we'd like to work with the pending ordinance going forward, but the need to extend this moratorium doesn't seem very clear. If we can deal with the safety issues, we should deal with those immediately. If you do choose to pass this moratorium, this extension, the industry, CALWA, would like to see those pending applications move forward if they have nothing to do with those, let's say, violations that stemmed the need and the impetus for this moratorium. So we would request, if you do choose to pursue this moratorium, this extension of the moratorium, that you strongly consider pulling those pending applications that are in process now and allow those to go through under the current regulations that are on the books. With that, I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Friedman? Got to close the public comment.
First, a comment to the last gentleman who spoke. I'm not sure if you were here through the last hearing and the whole series of hearings. From what you, the comments you made, I don't think that you were. Just to bring you up to speed a little bit, our interest in a moratorium has really nothing to do with those towers that were found to be in violation. That's a side effect of us going back and taking a look at those. The first speaker, Ms. Patty Ringo, she said something that really struck me. She said that she didn't want us to craft an ordinance She said that she didn't want us to craft an ordinance, that crafting an ordinance doesn't have to be a long, drawn-out, and painful experience. Well, if you want to see a long, drawn-out, and painful experience, look at what the people from GO Act have been going through for the past couple of years now. To Mr. McMahon, who spent many, many months fighting against a cell tower going right in front of his front door. That's a long, and drawn-out, and painful experience. We're here because we represent those people. So, we want to prevent that from happening. No resident should have to go through a long, drawn-out, and painful experience to protect their property. So that's what this is about. Now, in terms of those towers that are in serious violation, what I would have liked to see, or what I would like to see, is something whereby, if they're not immediately corrected, or if they are such a serious violation that they really have been compromising public health and safety, that they go away and are subject to the same moratorium. Certainly, if they're not corrected immediately, they should lose their rights to exist under the current ordinance. In my mind, things that are currently, that are pending, the applications that are pending is sort of the reason that we have to have an emergency moratorium, because the industry did not voluntarily withdraw those when it became clear to everybody and to all the residents in Glendale that we had a big issue. And just to, again, be clear to the public, this is not about standing in the way of progress, or stopping cellular technology. This is about localities saying that we have the right to control what goes on in our public right-of-way, that the wireless industry does not own city property, and that as a city government, we should have some right and the responsibility to regulate the way the towers look, and where they go, and to be sure that they're absolutely necessary. So that's what this is about. And it's not about not being scientific, or being scared to death of new technology. It's about having a responsibility to be regulators, and to ensure public safety. So, I must say respectfully, that I sort of resent being told that we want to stop people from videotaping their children at ballgames, or that we don't want to be forward-thinking. I happen to think that if we get this ordinance right, and I believe that we have a great city attorney's office, and they will get it right, that we're going to actually be a model for an ordinance that protects our people, protects our rights as a city, and that also can accommodate the wireless community, so that when they come in, they don't run into these kinds of problems, and that installations can go forward smoothly, and with a happy group of customers that you'll be serving.
Mr. Weaver, followed by Mr. Drayman.
Just so you understand, I support the moratorium, but in relation to that, I think we can do it less than 12 months, too. But I'm really reading the letter from CALWA, and it makes me wonder, how did we ever exist in this world before wireless came along? Because it says in here, "Wireless usage expands to include new devices for data and mobile media. Carriers will need additional facilities to meet subscriber demand. A strong, high-quality signal in residential areas so that wireless users can be protected emergency is required." We've had emergencies ever since I've been alive, and we've managed to survive. We need that with this, I've never heard of it, an E911 call. They can locate somebody within 100 meters if they have the right towers. And it says, "Yet this life-saving service requires a robust signal to operate properly, making wireless infrastructure a crucial public safety necessity, particularly in the residential areas that cannot be developed a result of the moratorium." And look at this: crucial, necessity, robust, strong. How did we ever exist in the past? I got a, we all got a listing of the wireless facilities in Glendale, and while it doesn't apply now, but my curiosity has peaked in. As far as, if I count it right, we have 102 wireless facilities in Glendale already: 22 by AT&amp;T, 14 by Sprint, 11 by Verizon, 12 by Nextel, T-Mobile, 42. Now, something doesn't add up. T-Mobile, for instance, is trying to put another one in. How many is enough? How are the signals and everything reacting out there? Why can one have five or 10 in cover? My canyon, as far as map shows, there's only one or two carries in the entire Glen Oaks Canyon, and only a couple in Chevy Chase. But I'm sure Nextel, Verizon, Sprint are all in there. How's their signals getting in? So do you need as many as you say? Is it buildings? What is, what is causing the problem? Strong signals? Now gee, I know Mr. Drayman and I, having grown up here, went to movie theaters, and I'd be willing to bet most of the movie theaters had asbestos curtains, until we found out asbestos wasn't particularly good, all gone. Then I remember, we were all, we both drank Glendale water for decades, till we found it had chromium 6. Oh, now we trade the water.
Actually, Mr. Weaver, in fairness, I think when you drank the water, it predated the chromium 6, but...
Well, I don't know. That's okay, he's a good guy. But I drank it before and after.
It might have been chromium 1.
Yeah, chromium 1. And then if you listen to, if you want to read about cell phones, don't hold them up to your right ear, you hold them up to your left ear, because it does certain things to the brain. That, no, I better not go there with that one. So, who's to say that the radio transmissions from wireless, that we know all the answers today? What is technology going to show us in five, 10 years? We could come out with an edict just like it did for asbestos, or chromium 6, or the cell phones, that these frequencies, oh, by God, they are causing problems. Hopefully not. We don't know. But crafting a proper ordinance is a first step in trying to understand, because the proliferation of wireless is going to continue to grow and grow, as has been stated, because of the demand for all forms of technology that are coming. Hopefully, one day, there will be no cell towers at all, everything will be from satellite, and we won't have to worry. But it isn't here today. So, I think the right thing to do is put the moratorium on, get staff on it, and see if we can do it in six months or less. Thank you.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, I support the moratorium, and I support a moratorium of length that was advocated by Ms. Sansoni wherever she went. Oh, there she is. And I thank you for your report. Well, a lot of my thunder was stolen by my colleague, Ms. Friedman, and I'm extremely happy about that. I would only take exception with one phrase, and that was the words "sort of", when you said "sort of offended by". I'm not sort of offended, I am. When I, when someone comes to advocate before this council, I listen very carefully to what they say, and when they're telling me that, that a, an attempt to control what is going on within our city's borders and our public right-of-way, at the request of our citizens, will cause a breakdown in public safety, and it will involve the destruction of the very history of wireless, wireless communications, everything from ship-to-shore broadcasts, to the destruction of commerce, and even motherhood, really is offensive. And it's not just offensive because it's just plain dumb, it's also assumes that this council is made up of people who are just plain dumb, and I don't think that's the case. I wonder if those people who say those kinds of things before this council, this go-around and the last go-around, whether this is just a script that they hand out to each other when they go from municipality to municipality, and tell us how this, an attempt to gain some kind of oversight with regard to cellular transmission is, we'll just use this scare tactic, I am offended by that. I want some serious debate on this, and I want some serious discussion on it, and I think we need some time to do that. I think the public, the public advocates, need that time as well to provide input. I actually, the speaker was talking about community experts. I have to tell you, I have learned a great deal more, I have found in retrospect, doing research on my own, I have found more accurate information presented at this council dais by our community experts who have taken the time to advocate here, than I have those who have told us, again, about the ship-to-shore communications, the destruction of motherhood, the breakdown in our public safety assets, and the destruction of commerce, have contributed to the debate. To the gentleman who came forward and says, "We stand ready", we stand, I think Mr. Clark, was it? "We stand ready to participate." Well, I appreciate that. I would, I'm still waiting, as one elected official, to hear participation that has something to do with the reality at hand, and not dire predictions about the downfall of humanity, starting in the city of Glendale, if we should dare to try to represent our public's interests. I'm not saying, sir, that you brought those issues up, the lady from CALWA did, but we've been hearing a lot about how everyone stands ready and able and willing to participate. But so far, I'm not hearing anything to refute the comments made by the public. Anyway, for now, that's all I have to say on it, Mr. Mayor, but I will be supporting the moratorium as presented.
Okay. Mr. Najarian.
I have a question for Mr. Howard. These two cases, the San Diego case and the St. Louis case, have been consolidated, and they're up for review by the Supreme Court.
Petition's certiorari is pending.
Okay. Now, if the Supreme Court hears those cases and makes a decision, will that be the controlling law of the nation, essentially?
Yes, and maybe. Yes, as far as the issues that are going to be addressed, and depending upon what the court does, and depending upon how it articulates its decision, as you know, many times, the decisions of the Supreme Court are not black and white, and they're in definite shades of gray. And so, as with any decision, if there is one, from the Supreme Court, it's going to have to be carefully analyzed to determine where the end line and, or should I say, the beginning line and the end line is for purposes of our ability to regulate wireless facilities locally.
Okay. We're going to be, in this moratorium period, we're going to be crafting an ordinance.
Correct.
In a certain manner. Will that ordinance, is it possible that ordinance will face challenge under the existing decisions of the San Diego case?
The ordinance that we are currently working on in what I'll call skeletal format at this point in time, before we roll it out to the community and the industry for comment, we are attempting to get, to put together the strongest ordinance that will allow the greatest local regulation, taking into account the current state of the law, both at the state level, the federal level, and as interpreted by the courts. It'll be a collaborative process, with a lot of community involvement, with industry involvement. We have, not only, why consider one of the best in-house staff members in General Counsel, Chris Sansoni, to handle that in-house, but also two well-recognized experts in the field, attorneys to also assist us in crafting that ordinance. I think, as some of the speakers have said, at the end of the day, we are going to have an ordinance before the city council that will be, in our view, state-of-the-art.
And at the same time, we are sending comments to the FCC...
I've already done some.
...as well as Congress, in the, in the event that they clarify the, the rights of local government versus communication companies. Is that correct?
Both on the issue of broadband, where the mayor signed the letter, and we've e-served that on Friday, and hard copied that behind it, as well as the resolution adopted tonight, which discusses the issue of the need to have Congress have another look, see at the health impacts of RF emissions, as well as possibly amending the Telecommunications Act of 1996 to provide greater local regulation and clarity.
So we've got an administrative, a administrative body, the FCC, we've got Congress, we've got the Supreme Court, all potentially putting their spin on what they feel is the powers that they're going to grant the local government.
Now, in addition, there's now, as you heard from at least one of the speakers, you begin, you're beginning to have a, I won't call it a groundswell at this point, but certainly some interest in looking at the state level with PUC as well. You have 7901 of, under California law, which also regulates the, our ability to impose limitations on the exercise of our rights within our right-of-way.
Are there...
So that, as one speaker indicated, it's a very complex area.
It is very complex. Are there cities, League of Cities, or some other group, municipal government group, that are working together to create this super ordinance, or state-of-the-art ordinance, as you put it?
There, the only one, and Ms. Sansoni can perhaps, and with Mr. Melching, perhaps, answer this better than I can. I'm aware of a subcommittee at the International Municipal Lawyers Association, of which I'm a, what's called the Ninth Circuit Chair, of this multi-state region here.
Congratulations.
That deal, that's been there. Sometimes it's a, I'm not sure if it's congratulations or condolences, but in any event, there is a committee nationwide that's attempting to address telecommunications issues, and as they come up, they comment based on the interests of the cities they represent, national level. Ms. Sansoni and Mr. Melching could certainly possibly add to that as well. I don't know if there's any league entities at the local level, any league subcommittees at the local level. Certainly, there's attorneys that are interested at the local level, different, represent communities, both in-house and as outside counsel.
Just briefly, Jeff Melching, I'm with Rattan and Tucker, have been hired as outside counsel to help out with the telecommunications ordinance. There are not formal committees for coming up with a statewide recommendation for what a state-of-the-art telecommunications ordinance might be. However, it's a true statement that I, for example, am aware of pretty much every city in Southern California that's working on a telecommunications ordinance, and go out of my way to communicate with city attorneys or other attorneys that are involved in that ordinance development process, and some of them do the same thing for me. And so, as we have been crafting Glendale's ordinance, it isn't an exercise that takes place in a vacuum at all. We, we look at, for example, the San Diego ordinance, and see what's good about that, and what needs improvement from that, do the same thing for Pasadena, use Irvine's ordinance to a certain extent, Torrance's ordinance to a certain extent, look at what's happening with the city and county of San Francisco, and group all of those things together with an aim toward achieving the best for this city that comes from all of those other ordinances.
And that's all subject to, as we said, those different external forces that may make either court rulings, or legislation, or clarification, or scientific evidence, or a desire for same, not unanimity, but same type of, what's the word I'm looking for? The same type of regulations throughout the state where one city has it one way, another city has it another way. I mean, there's got to be some consistency of, of regulations as well.
That's true, and, and a lot of that consistency comes from the precedents that come from the, what I would loosely refer to as superior levels of government, that being the courts, and the FCC, and the Supreme Court, for that matter. And on that subject, just ever so briefly, last week, or actually, it was the end of the week preceding, the United States Solicitor General did come out with its recommendation for what to do with the Ninth Circuit case before the Supreme Court, and its recommendation was that certiorari be denied. And usually, when that happens, that means that certiorari will be denied. The Solicitor General was specifically invited by the Supreme Court to offer his opinion, her opinion, rather, on that subject. And usually, the Supreme Court awaits that decision, and if it's a thumbs-down decision, that's pretty much the end of the game.
So then we're stuck with the interpretation of the Ninth Circuit...
We're not stuck with it, we're helped by it.
I mean, not stuck, but the controlling, the controlling direction, then, is the, is the San Diego case?
No ironclad guarantee, because anything can happen until the Supreme Court, you know, drops the gavel on the issue, but the fact of the matter is, is that looks as though it's going, how it's going to come down. And it does bear noting that the Solicitor General's office doesn't operate in a vacuum either. One of the things the Solicitor General would do in that circumstance is consult with, for example, the FCC. So you have some insight as to what the executive branch of the government thinks about the state of the law and the Ninth Circuit by virtue of that recommendation.
I also support the moratorium, and I'm specifically concerned with residential neighborhoods. That, to me, is what this is all about. I make a distinction between towers on Brand Boulevard or even sometimes the antennas and so forth that we've set up at sports facilities. I'm somewhat concerned there, but I think because of the height and so forth, I think we're okay. But it's the residential neighborhoods that particularly concern me, and I find it just a miscarriage of justice that some of the GOAC people had to do what they had to do. The incredible amount of time and energy and research and stress that they had to be exposed to, having to fight that placement of that particular tower there on Cumberland. That is just not right, folks. You're enjoying your single-family home, and all of a sudden, your world is turned upside down. People are digging in front of your house, and that's not, that's not the way it should be. That may be permissible under the law, but that's not, that's not appropriate. And yes, when they came forward, I've learned much more from their research than I have from some of the industry communications. I mean, that's just the reality. They've done their homework and, but like I say, it's really a shame that they have to spend the amount of time that they've spent. Then I'm very interested to hear what the Supreme Court has to say, because to me, boy, talk about a constitutional question. To me, it gets right down to whether it's the federal government that gets to run our lives, if you want to put it that way, or do local people get to have some kind of decision into what's going on in their, in their neighborhoods. The technical issues, I'm really not impressed with, because to me, it's less technical and more economical. I'm sure technically, these cellular companies are quite capable of putting together networks, but perhaps it costs more. I'm not an engineer, I don't know, but perhaps it costs more or whatever. Whatever it is, to me, technically, I'm sure that the, that the providers can provide adequate service. They're used to doing business in a certain mode, and they want to continue to do so. But I do support the moratorium. We have to work through it quickly with plenty of input from neighborhoods in addition to the, to the companies providing the service. And then, I do think if any, if there are sort of pending applications that are in commercial areas that aren't particularly affecting residential neighborhoods, then I think we need to look at those sites in a different, in a different manner. But I'm glad that we put this in front of the city council, and are there any other comments or questions? Mr. Drayman.
One brief comment. It was alluded to earlier. We're talking about commercials, oh, it was in response to Councilmember Friedman's question about distinctions between residential areas and commercial areas. And part of the answer that came, you know, we have in the city of Glendale, other than areas like Brand Boulevard, we have a number of neighborhood business districts, five where the residential, where it is, the commercial district is literally surrounded by residential. Whether it's Adams Hill or Montrose or Spar Heights or Kenneth Village, where residential literally backs right up against the business district. I want to be very careful about what we do in those areas, so we don't encourage a proliferation of cell sites, you know, technically into a commercial district and then defeat the purpose in some way. Anyway, just as a, just as a comment.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move 9A1.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce the urnancy ordinance at 982.
All right. The ordinance has been introduced. Next, please.
Next, returning to oral communication. It's from Mayor and Council. This is a portion where our discussion is limited in time, it's not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
I have the cards, Mr. Kusak. Ann Collard, followed by Charles Hooker.
Good evening. My name is Ann Collard. I'm sure most of you already know that my husband and I were the ones that were given a fine for $347,000 for trimming our protected oak trees. This is almost a year and a half ago. Somehow, we made it through that experience without coming and speaking at a city council meeting. But I find myself, once again, at odds with this city, and I feel the need to voice my concerns. This time, it's windows, not trees. And learning from our past mistake, my husband actually went down to the Glendale Department of Planning to file for a permit. We learned something from our past experience. He submitted our request to change out, change out our existing aluminum and steel windows with new vinyl replacement windows. To our shock and surprise, we were told, no. Vinyl windows were not appropriate, we were not allowed to have vinyl windows. I'd never heard of such a thing before. We had a couple of follow-up conversations with the Department of Planning and the historic planner. Their decision has been made and seems to be final. We are not allowed to use vinyl replacement windows on our home. So now, my only option is to pay $900 in appeal to the Design Review Board. I acquired which code or ordinance vinyl windows would be in violation of. I received an email from Mr. Hagani, the Director of Planning. In his email, he said there was no specific outlaw of vinyl windows and stated that municipal code actually listed window changeouts as exempt from the Design Review Board. This made sense to me. Window changeouts don't usually concern the Design Review Board. But Mr. Hagani went on to say, and I'm going to quote him here, and this is the part that concerns me, he said, "Subsection 5 gives staff wide latitude to determine if a project should be exempt." He then went on to quote subsection 5, which is very vague, and indeed, gives the Planning Department wide latitude. Not here to argue the pros and cons of vinyl windows. I'm more concerned with the process in which these decisions are being made and my rights as a homeowner. With the Indigenous Tree Ordinance, one department, the Public Works Department, was given unchecked power and saw fit in their wisdom to fine us $347,000. Thankfully, everybody agreed that that was ridiculous and it got waived. But once again, in trying to replace our windows, we see another city department has been given wide latitude to exert their power, and I, the homeowner, have been stripped of my rights. I'm here before you, you're elected to represent me and the citizens of Glendale, and so I wanted to let you know how these seemingly benign ordinances and codes play out in the day-to-day life of a homeowner. I would ask you to consider if it is the intent of city council that Department of Planning be giving carte blanche to approve or deny permits according to their subjective opinion of vinyl windows. In closing, I want to reiterate my concern over yet another imbalance of power. The vague language of the code has given all power to the Department of Planning and left me, the homeowner, with no recourse. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to agendize it.
Has been agendized.
Charles Hooker.
May I say that to her?
Why don't you wait till the end? Wait till the end.
It's going to be agendized.
Charles Hooker, followed by Al Hoffman.
Hi. My name is Charles Hooker. I am a resident of the Verdugo Woodlands in Glendale. What I'd like to talk to the city council about is our streets. We do not get our streets cleaned up in the Verdugo Woodlands if you live up in the hills, because we have great big condominium complexes, and we have people that leave their cars there, because we do not have any signs stating two-hour parking, you know, or any kind of parking for street cleaning up there. And as a result, we have huge rats that are growing, running around up there, and we never get our streets cleaned, and it's, you know, the Verdugo Woodlands used to be a really good area, and I'm almost up into Montrose, but the rats seem to like the lower part where our area is, and we could really need some help from the city trying to get the trash containers that the city issued to all of the residents that live up there off the streets and onto their own private property, because most of the people on our block, on Los Encinos, leave their trash barrels there weekly, and they never move. A friend of mine has helped me out, is he's, we poured some cement and made a little platform to take the barrels off of the street, and I'm sure everybody can take a look at our design that the man made, and there's plenty of places on their little tiny sidewalks that we have, that they can get these street, these barrels, the big barrels that the city has given us. If nothing else, they should be swapped out for smaller containers, and maybe the trash, you know, man would be able to pick up our barrels. Because I know, when I lived in Huntington Beach, we had trash service twice a week. But we do not get our street, it's, this is not the fault of the street cleaner, he cannot get in to clean in our area because of the cars being there and the trash barrels being there. So, and the leaves from all of our wonderful oak trees and sycamores, they're just accumulating, accumulating, unless you out there and do it yourself. But that's something that I'm paying the city of Glendale money to have somebody come around and once in a blue moon, come up our street and clean it. We're not getting anything. They need to have something eight o'clock to 10 o'clock, like they have in the city of Glendale and in Burbank, Pasadena, and it just needs to have some kind of attention by the city of Glendale. I know Mr. Zern has been real good about helping out on everything, and his crew is very, very efficient. In fact, his, the cleaners that do clean our streets, if we can wake somebody up and they move their car, they'll make a turnaround in the cul-de-sac and come back again and clean our street, you know, where that one car was. But we need some help trying to get our street clean. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Al Hoffman, followed by Barry Allen.
Mayor Quintero, council and staff. I'd like to make a comment on item three of the, pardon me, item eight. The way the thing was written, we weren't clear that it was.
Do that, Mr.
Had to do with the health part of the.
Past, this is oral communications on items. Not on the agenda. Mr. Hoffman, you're supposed to stick to items.
And therefore, it was, you know, benefits, it said benefits, and we didn't know what kind of benefits, and so certainly pension is a benefit, so I can understand why Mr. Milano thought, yeah, these are benefits, and he put together this presentation of all the data that he got. That brings me to my first comment again about Mr. Milano last week. Councilman Najarian, I was very disappointed in the comments you made about him after he left. I don't think he was saying that he was some kind of wizard in predicting that the economy would tank. He merely presented what the economy, it turned out, to be. And I think the point he was trying to make was that you shouldn't enter into long-term contracts that you're committed to over three years. And I think that was the point of the whole presentation, so I really didn't think he should have been so chastised at the end of the meeting. I think he, you know, actually, you know, Councilman Weaver's pointed out, he gets tired of hearing all this. Well, I think you ought to all be appreciative that there are citizens doing a lot of work, doing a lot of research. And at times, I feel they do more research into these things than you do at the dais, so I think it's important. And they have been pointing out problems with the budget, and here we are. We're in a severe budget problem in the city. And that's not just Glendale, it's everywhere. Cities are the first line of where our budget and the whole nation is going bad, and we got to start looking at the whole thing and getting control of it. The second item I wanted to talk to you about is to remind you about the Verdugo Hills Golf Course Draft EIR. I don't know, I sent out an email to all of you about trying to get a letter in to get it extended, because there's just not enough time. And I think a letter from Mayor and Mr. Starbird would be very effective to the people I put down here. The third item I had was, last week, I ran into former Mayor Carl Raju at my dentist, and we discussed his trash conversion proposal that he's made here before, and we talked about last year about converting trash into power and to relieve the Shoal Canyon. And I think it's very important. Now, he's met with a lot of officials in Los Angeles County and city, and he's also met with Representative Adam Schiff, who has really worked on Carl, because Carl used to be on the staff at JPL, and the particular unit has been running at a NASA facility for about 20 years, I guess now. And Carl and Adam Schiff thought it would be great, they're approaching JPL to see if they could develop such a unit and have a demonstration unit at Shoal Canyon. And I think it's something that we should put on the agenda, because it's very important. Shoal Canyon's going to run out of capability, and I think if we put enough of them in Carl's cities, we can actually make money on it, because we can charge other cities to come use them. And right now, that would be very worthwhile to look into. So I request that you consider putting it on an agenda in the near future, because there's a lot that can be done, and I think we have at our disposal the NASA facility that could really help us do that. And it would be good for the city and for all of us here. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Allen, followed by Herbert Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. Like a giant pyramid scheme, government agencies are getting closer to the end of the line, where revenues will not sustain growing payrolls, benefits, and pensions, along with more middle-management employees. The recession has brought out the long-term hidden cost of government. Because of a 2007 Supreme Court decision, California Supreme Court, the public was allowed to look at the actual government employee wages, something that the city of Glendale fought against by signing on to an amicus brief, and something that the city of Glendale presently refuses to supply, the names and amounts of performance bonuses granted by the city manager. Then, calpers respond to the public by publishing the list of pensioners that are receiving $100,000-plus annual pensions. Today, that number is 6,000, and growing at the rate of 120 new $100,000 pension club members a month statewide. My colleague, Mr. Milano, has demonstrated the increase in the number of city employees. Just last week, the council approved the creation of 10 new job titles, with the claim that these new positions would save $23,000 this year. They did not respond to the cost over the next 10 years. The increase in the number of employees, the salary and benefit increases, the generous pensions coupled with long-term borrowing over $350 million is unsustainable. The city revenues are decreasing, sales tax and property tax. The state is in its mad rush to deficit oblivion and will be borrowing more money from the cities, while Glendale council and management apparently are oblivious to the fact that the city can't sustain their generosity. We also hear that we're doing things for our children. Ha! We've given them a mediocre education, we've increased the borrowing so that they can pay down the debt, we let the infrastructure to fall into decay and disrepair, and we pay the. And we pay these outrageous salaries. Why become a doctor when you can become a fireman? Work 25 years at a pay scale and benefits of $200,000 a year and retire at 50 with a pension of over $100,000 a year? We can't count on income taxes from the pensions, because many of the pensions go without, because of disabilities, they don't pay tax or very little tax. This should be a wake-up call to all the people whose tax dollars support these government workers, a pyramid scheme that has run out of time and money. Even more frightening is the Calpers report showing that they have $184 billion left, that's up from $169 billion earlier this year, in the investment pool, which was down one-third from $265 billion last year. Here's some Calpers facts. For year ending June 2008, revenue from employees of members, 3.5 billion; from employers, 7.2 billion; and the expenditures for benefits was over $11 billion. So they had to borrow it from their pool. Presently, there are 476,000 members receiving monthly benefits. There are 1.126 active and inactive members. And people should now be convinced of what it's actually costing, and what it's going to continue to cost, and where is that money going to come from? It's something that those sitting on the dais have the control over, and it's something that they need to take a very sharp pencil to. And by the way, a week or so ago, Mr. Garcia was commenting on the Attorney General's opinion regarding providing information on performance bonuses. I think he cited the wrong one. I'm going to give this to Mr. Kostakian, who can make copies as necessary for the members of the council. And I want to remind people of our weekly breakfast at Foxy's every Friday and our conference calls on Wednesday, where we'll be talking about budget issues. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Herbert Milano, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. For many years, I think back to around 2002, I started looking at the budget of the city of Glendale sporadically at first. Oftentimes, I was the only person from the public present. I used to, and I still do, buy every year the city's budget, and I go over it. I have a special interest in it, because there are some things that didn't make sense to me. Among the things that didn't make sense to me is that how can a city sustain agreements with employee unions, agreements that give 4%, 5%, 6% year-over-year increases? When you have built in into the tax base that we have in California, limitations on the property tax at 2% per year. And that amount of property tax is only 40%, well, a little bit over 40% of the, less than 40% of the general fund. So just looking at the general fund alone is an unsustainable number. You also take a look at the general growth in the economy at around 3.5%. Also, there's not enough there that would be coming out of sales tax in order to sustain that. It doesn't make sense. So, how can we approve, you know, those type of increases, when I see other inherent things that are problematic to me? I have been puzzled as to how management employees can receive pay raises, when I have seen project after project, major project in the tens of millions go over budget significantly. And yet, no one is held accountable. People still get their raises. You know, I don't see anybody being fired or reprimanded. Okay, how can it be, you know, that a city can be sued for sexual harassment in the police department one year, and three years later, it happens again? How can that be if policies are not put into place, and then management still are held not accountable? They still get their pay raises year for year. So where is the performance? How can the city lose tens of millions of dollars in project overruns? Millions upon millions of dollars in lawsuits on sexual harassment, and management is never held accountable? How can during a period of 10 years, increase the number of personnel in management, middle management, by 45% when the population only grew by five? So now you have more people, the payroll increasing, and they still get their pay and benefit increases. That doesn't make sense to me. And so, I've been trying to basically figure out how it is that we actually arrive at this thing. And when we are puzzled about that, we look at the Form 460, we see an amount that is being contributed to the campaign, and say, well, what else? Because we're kept in the dark. If 80% of the expenses of the general fund and many of the other cities' funds are for payroll, and you are doing it behind closed doors, then what other information do we have in order to make that judgment? Nothing. The only thing we can guess is, wait a second, if you're not doing anything concerning the egregious behavior here, you're getting these funds from the 460 here, and everything takes place behind closed doors, and basically you bring it after the fact without any discussion, then the only conclusion that we can make is that there is a link between those contributions and eventually the type of benefit packages that you're providing. And it is incredibly ridiculous. You find benefit packages where you're paying for college courses that have nothing to do with the type of performance that this, many of these highly-paid individuals are making. One year, I saw someone making $250,000 taking a college course in ethics, you know, and in astronomy, and in Shakespeare and so forth. How does that benefit, you know, the citizens of Glendale and the stakeholders? But we are not able to ask those questions, or we're not able to challenge it, because the MOUs are being discussed behind closed doors. So if you don't want the public to be suspect of what takes place, you absolutely need to have these MOU discussions done in full transparency and in full view of the public, so that we really understand that there is really no give and take, that the whole idea behind, not even give and take with regard to the influence of campaign contributions on your decisions. I'd like to see, you know, a very clear understanding, and someone say, wait a second, the conditions of the economy is such that we cannot afford to provide you with this type of benefit. Or this type of benefit, if we projected, you know, 10, 20, 30 years into the future, will be incredibly unsustainable, where there is no more money left out of the general fund, and we have to find some other way, you know, to continue to basically pull that money out of the taxpayer. Because at the end of the day, you have been pulling money out of the CIP funds continually. The sales tax used to be 50% towards capital improvement, is now down to 4%. We have some serious problems, but the biggest one is the lack of transparency. Thank you. By the way, I have reports here from 2002.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Shirley Ann-
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, members of staff, and the audience. It isn't that late, I guess they will stay up, the TV audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, longtime resident of Glendale. First off, something that I've been waiting to address, is regarding the upcoming boxing event at the Civic Auditorium. I would like to know, will there be a public financial report available as to the costs, especially for service personnel for that event? Now, I know that they're supposed to pay for some of it, but I'm just wondering how many it's going to take to control the event, the parking, the whole thing, and particularly when they are going to be serving alcohol there. And when, and will that report be available for public perusal? Like me, I want to see it. Know that we're not going to be paying, the public are not going to be paying for that event in any way, shape, or form. And how much money will we make on it? The other thing is, I have asked for, back several months ago, for, and I understand it's now available, for a map of the, where those towers and so forth were, and I understand that it is available. I haven't seen it, but I'm sure that I can get it if I ask for it. And, but, and also, I keep asking, does the city get any financial benefit from these towers, in any way, shape, or form? That they're on our property and so forth, I mean, anything else that would be set there, we'd have to pay rent, or some kind of, for using our right-of-way? I mean, I couldn't just set up a coffee shop or a lemonade stand on the right-of-way and not have some kickback on it, I'm sure. Now, the other thing is that after last week, when Mr. Najarian berated Mr. Milano, I was very embarrassed. And I feel this way. The cities, citizens of this city, vote for their fellow residents and get them elected as council people. Should these elected residents, or could they, or would they, walk up to a group of people at a social event and start mocking them about their beliefs or opinions, without giving them an opportunity to reply? This would be considered very bad manners, and not very nice at all to do to your neighbors and your friends. I mean, I don't think it is, and I'm going to keep saying that. I just feel it's bad manners. You know, it's no wonder that citizens are not only reluctant to come to council to voice their concerns, but are downright petrified, because they don't want to be embarrassed and made fun of when they voice their opinions. They don't want to, their fellow citizens or neighbors to think, oh yeah, you're an idiot, you got up there and look what you got for speaking your mind. And I'm saying, I don't think it was nice at all. I mean, I get into arguments with people and discussions, but to have people publicly laugh at them, at another person, and when they're giving their opinion, I don't think that's really too great. Thank you very much.
No clapping, please, Mr. Mohill. Shirley Ann Hill, followed by Bill Wiseman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and council people, council members, and our staff, and the viewers who might still be looking. Well, I'm here to tell you about something fun. And that is an exciting event that's coming on June 25th at 6:00 PM, and it's to benefit the Glendale Symphony Orchestra. It's called "A Summer Evening Under the Stars," and we're going to be entertained by Fritz Coleman, who's nationally recognized as an NBC weathercaster, humorist, and entertainer, along with familiar classical favorites presented in mini-concert by members of the Glendale Symphony Orchestra. You'll begin your evening with the wine and hors d'oeuvres reception at 6:00 PM in the beautiful museum courtyard. This delightful evening is going to take place outside the museum of the Forest Lawn in a majestic garden setting. And I think we all know that's located over on South Glendale Avenue. So, I've got invitations with me, if anybody's interested, I hope you'll come. We're expecting a wonderful time, it's a beautiful location, and it benefits the Glendale Symphony Orchestra. Thank you.
Ms. Hill, I apologize, you didn't indicate that you wanted to make an announcement, you could have spoken at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, and I wouldn't have had, I've lost my voice, I sat here so long. I could hardly talk.
Very sorry.
But I-
We normally take presentations at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, thank you for explaining that.
Next time.
And next time, I will, thank you.
Give us the date, give us the date and time again.
Okay, it's June 25th, and that's a Thursday evening, and it starts at 6:00 to 9:00. And did everybody understand the entertainment and good food and so forth?
Forest Lawn Museum.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Bill Wiseman, followed by Sharon Wiseman.
Okay, the first of our one-two punch here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman, and I live up in the mists and the fog of far north Glendale. At least, that's the way it's been the last week or so. There's a couple of things I wanted to talk about tonight. The first one has to do with the 710 Tunnel that is being proposed to connect the missing gap in the freeway from Alhambra up through South Pasadena. There have already been a number of community meetings on this subject, and I wanted to let anyone know who is interested. The next such meeting is going to be one week from tonight, Tuesday, June 16th. It's going to be the Northeast Los Angeles Community Meeting. It's going to be at Ramona Hall. The address is 4580 North Figueroa Street. And so I apologize in advance, I'm not going to be here next week to see the city council meeting, I'm going to be at that meeting. And anyone who is concerned about this project, or who wants the opportunity to network with other folks that are concerned, would recommend that if you can, you can attend this meeting. The other thing I wanted to mention, just very briefly, is on a completely different subject, to turn things around and talk a little about cell phones. There's a new technology that's pretty much just come out this year. It's called a femto-cell. And it's being supported by T-Mobile, by Verizon, by Sprint, and by AT&amp;T, as far as I know. And basically what it is, it's like a wireless access point, but it sits in your house. So you don't need to have a big cell antenna on your corner. You can have a very small device in your house that operates at much lower power level, so it's much safer. It will support all of your family's third-generation iPhones, so you and your kids can be doing whatever online. And the backhaul communications is through your existing DSL or broadband connection, and so it's much higher bandwidth. And really, it's a way sort of of decentralizing cellular service. Instead of having one antenna to serve an area, it would probably almost be cheaper, especially for all the people who already have broadband connectivity. One of these devices right now costs about 250 bucks, but the price is going to come down as they get more popular. You could, it would probably be cheaper to buy one of these things for every person in a block and have, even to buy them broadband service if they don't already have it, than the cost of putting up an antenna. So it's just something to consider. New technology coming along, femto-cell, basically your own personal cellphone antenna inside your house. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Wiseman.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, members and staff. I'm Sharon Wiseman from far north Glendale. I'm speaking as an individual. I've attended many council, board, and commission meetings over the past few years, and viewed others on streaming video via the internet, including one council meeting from the hotel in Quito, Ecuador on the way home from the Galapagos Islands last summer. I've spoken at a few and prepared a couple of commentaries that I thought better of and never delivered. There's always seemed to be plenty of commentary at council meetings, some of which I even agree with. I concentrated on the Glendale Unified School Board of Education meetings and have spoken more frequently there. In conjunction with cross-jurisdictional Crescent Valley Community Association, I've attended and occasionally spoken at meetings of the Los Angeles City Council, LA North Valley Planning Commission, the Sanlito Neighborhood Council and its Land Use Committee, which is roughly the equivalent to our DRBs, Crescent Valley Town Council, and LA County Board of Supervisors. When I've spoken, I've always tried to take the advice of my high school journalism teacher, Mrs. Juanita Rydel, who urged clarity through brevity, even when I spoke in reaction to something said and without a prepared text. I thought I'd noticed Patrick Azadian in the audience the past few weeks, and was glad to see his column. I'm sorry he wasn't here this evening. I was hoping to introduce myself and find out how to pronounce his last name, I hope I didn't mangle it. And yes, Herbert Milano and the other frequent speakers have every right to speak, and Mr. Milano's had some valid points in his many commentaries, many, many of which I've witnessed, either in person or live or on delayed streaming video. And I have to agree that ridicule is rarely appropriate. But if anyone deserves to be chided, it's Mr. Milano. He and his fellow frequent speakers and/or letter to the editor-writers, Vanguard contributors, and blog commenters over the past several years, Barry Allen, Bruce Philpott, Mike Mohill, Christian Arbed, and others, have implied improprieties over and over, and sometimes made outright accusations about council members and city staff. I'm not sure of the connection, but there was in the past, high school and college students here reading lists of employees making over $100,000 per year, a favorite theme of the above-mentioned group. That's pretty personal, in my opinion. Mr. Milano even brought a retired city finance expert to talk to the Glendale Homer's Coordinating Council from Los Angeles, as if that city provided better services for less taxes than we already have here in Glendale. If we are looking somewhere for a model of city government, I don't share Mr. Milano's apparent view that it's Los Angeles. I hope that staff and council reaction to Mr. Milano doesn't discourage more public participation as Mr. Azadian fears. It's been my experience that they are usually extremely patient with speakers. Council members are human, and while I encourage restraint, I urge forgiveness when they vent on so worthy a target. I hope Mr. Milano- I hope Mr. Milano is discouraged from repeating himself. One reason I feel this way is that I fear he is taking time away from other things needing attention. Some of the ideas put forth from candidates in the recent election deserve a bit of time, too. If Glendale had a business license with a nominal fee, large enough to cover administration and some outreach, we would have a better handle on what kinds of establishments are missing and should be encouraged. If it were renewable yearly, the database of businesses could be continuously updated and could be the basis of a city website-linked shop Glendale directory. Michael Tehan spoke about a business license or tax during his campaign, noting that the most frequent objection that businesses would move was not logical, since neighboring jurisdictions already have business licenses and/or tax, and we could set one equal or lower. I think Mr. Stepanian's idea to tax bottled water is a good idea, too, not to raise revenue, but to lower the use of throwaway bottles, and I'd like to see that the council has stopped that practice. If the city can impose additional fees on disposable things, it might lengthen the life of our landfill. It would be wise to look into renters' complaints and do more to explain vacancy de-control mandated by state law to those calling for rent control. Meanwhile, long-term solutions to produce more low-income and moderate housing needs to be continued. I plan to echo Councilman Drayman's call for a program to register people who are interested in cohousing, but that's already on the agenda coming up. And as I mentioned last year, and the last time I did a commentary here at Oral Communications, if any homes in the city are in danger of being empty due to foreclosure, I urge some public-private partnership to get first responders, city employees, or city school board teachers, or local hospital employees into those homes, so we have those good people here on call in case there's an emergency, so they can walk to the issue, not have to come from a long way. I also urge frequent speakers to condense their remarks and keep them factual, verifiable, and as positive as possible. If they were less confrontational, perhaps the council would be better able to find the kernels within all the shaft. And by the way, my CalPERS pension went down a little bit due to some withholding of taxes that we do pay on our taxes, on our pensions. I don't know why people think they're not taxed. Only that portion that was previously taxed before, while you were working, gets out of the tax. And thank you. One other issue, typically memos of understanding for multi-years are a good idea, because they make the employee costs more predictable over time, and that's one huge problem with budgeting in a public agency. Yearly budgets mean you can't have any, you know, you are limited in your long-term planning. So, I applaud you for doing multi-year agreements with the employee organizations. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for letting me go a little bit more.
Thank you, Ms. Weisman. No applause, Mr. Najarian.
Am I allowed to smile? Or is that, it's the rules, too?
Any responses?
Are we done?
I think you have another speaker? No?
I didn't see it. And we saw no card submitted for Mr. Mohill.
No card, Mr. Mohill.
Card was blank.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it. Ask for the last, rest is at the back.
You're being quite beneficent, Mr. Mayor. I want to point that out to the folks at home.
Don't let it happen again, Mr. Mohill. You know what the rules are.
I know, but I thought, I thought.
You must have thought.
There was only, there was only one card submitted. Card, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again, Mrs. Friedman. Excuse me for mispronouncing me. Congratulations, councilmen and women. Instead of owning a car company like President Obama and the Democratic Party, the police union, the fire department union, city managers' union, and the city employees' union all own the city of Glendale by way of campaign monies that you've all received in the past and most recently. The United Auto Workers Union gave President Obama and the DNC $85 million in campaign monies. Today, the taxpayers own a car company. Thank you, union bosses. Mayor Quintero and Najarian both got $15,000 from the public unions last year. The council is quick to ridicule and criticize people who challenge you. Last year's messenger was Barry Allen, when he brought before Mr. Weaver's comment on the smoking ordinance in the Pasadena Weekly Magazine. His comments embarrassed the city, the council, and himself. But Quintero, Najarian, and Weaver voted down a motion to sanction Mr. Weaver for his bad behavior. Also, Bruce Philpott was chastised for bringing to the public how to make our fire department run more efficiently. In the GNP this morning, it was reported that city manager Starbird was able to successfully challenge Mr. Herbert Milano's case in predicting the current economic downturn. Mayor Quintero, and Councilman Najarian, and Weaver all criticized Milano's position on the police union contract. Some even criticized Milano for not being able to predict the future. Well, gentlemen, let me remind you that in the last quarter of last year, I came before you many times with my headline news of the economy, and you just stared at me like I was some lanky. Businessman-turned-politician Mayor Quintero said that he was unable to predict the future and said that the sun will rise again. In the budget of 2008 and 2009, our city manager, Mr. Starbird, misinformed the city council by telling them that there was going to be a $10 million deficit. A few months later, Mr. Starbird revealed to the public and council another shortfall of $8.5 million. That was an $18 million oops. What other adjustments can we expect in the next six months, Mr. Starbird? For budget 2009 and 2010, Starbird stated that there'd be a $6 million shortfall, and then weeks later, the budget deficit had grown to $9.9 million. So, I only have one question to ask our present council. How many times are you going to be made a fool of by our illustrious city manager and his highly-paid staff? Thank you.
Okay, any comments, Ms. Friedman?
A lively discussion tonight. Mr. Zern, could you, and I understand you have been communicating with the gentleman who's having the issue with the trash on the street, but is there any way that we can help resolve that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, I haven't had a discussion. This particular issue, Mr. Hooker's been in contact with me before on other issues that we've responded to, so I'll look into this and see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you. So, hopefully, we can help you out with that. To Mr. Hoffman, who had talked about former mayor Ragio, I think that Carl Ragio was a real visionary to be talking about waste to energy 10 years ago. And I just want you and he and the public to know that it hasn't gone, that I think that his work will be rewarded, and I know the city has been looking into this very seriously and having a series of meetings with different vendors, different groups. So, I do hope that very soon, there'll be something that will come to fruition, and by soon, I mean, you know, within the next couple of years, at least, to move in that direction. And there is support on this council, on this dais, and within the city, so it's just that we need to lay the groundwork, because it's going to be a big and expensive undertaking, but they're taking it very, very seriously, and we're moving in that direction. In terms of, we heard from a few of the speakers about the potential of doing employee association negotiations in public, and I'm just wondering, is that advisable? And if not, why not?
Well, yes, my recommendation to you would be that your direction to your staff, like in any negotiations, be from you to your staff confidentially. Currently, you take those in closed session for obvious reasons, and that is, it's negotiations. There are two sides in the process, and there are some states that have open meeting requirements for meet-and-confer. There are few and far between, there's literature on it that frankly, I'm not particularly up on, but there are some examples of a few states who do require that it be open. The same with respect to negotiations. You can imagine what negotiations between the unions and your representatives would be like if indeed that was done in a fishbowl. I dare say it wouldn't be very productive.
Mr. Drayman.
Just a couple of things. I suspect Mr. Weaver will get to it, but to Ms. Collard, the issue of vinyl windows Mr. Weaver raised earlier today to agendize the topic, so we can get into discussions about it. I think a number of us want to have some open discussion about it. There are vinyl windows, perhaps, and then there are vinyl windows. And so, the only way we're going to get to the issue is if we put it on the agenda and actually get into it. So, that's coming. And by the way, your comment about you learned something from the experience about the trees, guess what, so did we. We learned something as well. The only other thing, Mr. Mayor, was for Margaret about the cost of the boxing. This has been explained, gosh, I don't know, a dozen times or more on the dais. When we were having the initial debate, I can't tell you how, I leaned on the gentleman who was speaking at the dais, plus city staff, to make sure that the interests that were unanimous from this dais with regard to costs being covered by the promoter, and we were assured, yes, 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 yes. I assume those are, those figures are all of public record, just as they would be with any organization, private or nonprofit, that rents a facility and has requirements set out by the municipality for the production or sponsorship of their event. I suspect not all that differently than, for example, the Arts and Crafts Festival from last week. All of the costs that were billed to the sponsoring entity are public record. So, that is not by way of a criticism, that is by way of saying, it's going to be available, and it better reflect what this council laid out, and I suspect it will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Weaver.
Not speaking to any of the accuracy of any numbers I've heard here tonight, but I was thinking back to when I started working in 1958. I knew I was getting paid, and I had a dream of what I hoped to earn by the time I'd worked 30, 40 years and was ready to retire. I had, I would be in seventh heaven. I had hoped, in my career, to make as much as $12,500 a year. This was 1958. I was making a couple thousand dollars, two or three thousand, part-time, summer, and seldom ever did you, you heard the word millionaire used, some. You didn't hear the word billionaire or billions budgets. Now you do. Now you're starting to hear the word trillion. And in our children's lifetime, there'll probably be, I don't know what goes beyond trillion. Other, huh? Quadrillion? Quadrillion. So, what I'm saying is, everything has got a cost of bread back when. Everything goes up, salaries goes up, everything goes up. So, when you start talking about bigger numbers, it's because of inflation, everything else that occurs over the years and the decades. So, and I said, I'm not putting any validity in any numbers I heard here tonight, I'm just saying, that's what happens over time. People make more money, benefits, they make more, et cetera, just part of the game. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian.
Well, I seem to have shocked a few people last week when I spoke against and tried to point out the fallacies, Mr. Milano's claim that we should have been able to predict the economic downturn, because that's what his discussion was about. We should have known that there was going to be an economic downturn, and so, city council, we should have not entered into a two-year or three-year agreement. Well, Margaret, and Al, and Lenore, and Mr. Mohill, I have not been quick to speak against Mr. Milano. I've been sitting here for four years quietly, listening to it, taking it from him, taking his personal attacks, his unfounded charges of committing felonious acts such as bribery, of being unethical, of having moral lapses, and oh my goodness, councilman stands up and speaks out against Mr. Milano, and the earth is shaking. He's got the news press writing about it, and Margaret, how can you do this? Well, ladies and gentlemen, decorum is a two-way street. And just to put everyone on notice, from now on, when Mr. Milano makes unfounded charges, attacks, personal attacks, charges of committing crimes, I'm going to speak out against it. And if that's going to shock you, and if you think that in any way ridicules the speakers, well, I'm sorry, but it is a two-way street. We've sat here, and I've sat here and taken it for four years. And for those people who are just tuning in, maybe just starting to follow city council, I want them to know that I'm not going to be silent anymore, and that in any way, silence does not condone the accusations, or in any way, accept the propositions that Mr. Milano makes. And I'm sure he would relish that, being a man who likes to discuss the issues. I hope that he can keep his arguments on the factual basis and not level personal attacks. I didn't see him complain about the points that I made in response to him yesterday. It was only his friends. So, I think he has a little bit of a thicker skin than you. But when he gets off like that, I'm going to stand up and I'm going to say, that's not true. And to his charges, that because the unions have paid X thousands of dollars, let's say 15,000, well, private citizens have paid over $130,000 to me. So, if you're going to judge the money coming in, loyalty based on the money coming in, well, then my loyalty by far, by a number of factors, is to the residents of Glendale. So, I don't hear that side of it either. But what Mr. Milano was saying yesterday, last week, excuse me, was with his charts, with a housing index, I don't know how that related to the city finances, was that we should have seen the economic downturn, and here's this article, who is it, Yogi Berra said hindsight is 2020. So, I will look forward to a vigorous debate, and I will challenge Mr. Milano when I feel that he's just gone over the line. I will accept some of his arguments as arguments, but there comes a point where this councilman just will have to speak out. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to start with the trash receptacle issue. What is the ordinance on trash receptacles in public sight?
They can, Mr. Mayor, they can only be put out at a certain time, and they have to be collected and put in. We changed the ordinance about two years ago in order to try to better coordinate the street sweepings. So, we give you the opportunity to put it out, and I believe it's 8:00 the night before the collection has to be in by 4:00 the evening of the collection, or 5:00 the evening of the.
Okay, but at no time should they be within sight of the street?
No, it just, it allows you to get them out a little ahead of time, and gives you some leeway to come home from work and put them away. So, we will check that as well.
Okay. Then, I would like to, if it takes putting it on the agenda, then let's do it quickly, but I would like to comment on the EIR and try to get an extension for the Verdugo Hills Golf Course. I think that's a very good idea. That directly impacts Glendale residents. In terms of waste to energy... In terms of waste to energy, in fact, it is on the agenda, and no, we don't need JPL. I think the, I mean, this is some, it's not new to the rest of the world. It's being used all over the world. I believe there are also plants here in the United States, but the last one that I saw was just amazing. It was in an upscale neighborhood somewhere in Tokyo, and you take a look at the pictures of that waste-to-energy plant, and it's just astounding. I'm not going to say it looked like a hotel or anything, but it just looked like a nice commercial building of some sort in what looked to be an upscale neighborhood, and it was waste to energy. There's different technologies, plasma and gasification, but it's a fact. We're working with the county, and hopefully, we're going to be able to make some strides in that, in that area. Then in terms of the boxing, as Mr. Draymond said, it's a commercial enterprise, and in fact, they're going to have to pay for the police protection and pay the fee at the civic auditorium, et cetera. On the comments by the columnist at the Glendale News Press, the only thing I said, for the record, I mentioned an economist named Abby Joseph Cohen, who happened to predict one recession. Became a very famous and, I think, wealthy woman as a result, and she's still on Wall Street, but that was about it. She got one right. Then, Mr. Mohill, you never cease to amaze me. It's always about the working man with you, Mr. Mohill. You're always trashing the United Auto Workers, trashing the unions. It's never management. The people that designed the Pinto and designed the Corvair, in other words, the management of General Motors and made all those great decisions, and Ford and Chrysler, they're not in any way responsible for the downturn in the economy. You haven't ever said one word about the money that the federal government gave and the Bush administration gave to the banks or to AIG. Never mentioned any of that. That's gone and basically gone forever. But by God, those people that have worked all their lives and plants and so forth there, they just can't be, they just can't be right. And what I find so interesting, you keep talking about the labor unions, the strongest labor unions in the world are in Germany, and so are the strongest companies in the world. Mercedes-Benz, Porsche, Volkswagen, BMW, they have union members on the board of directors, and they're doing fine across the world. So I don't know, Mr. Mohill, you're always looking for the lowest common denominator. You know, that's what really, really is interesting about your presentations. And then to Mr. Barry Allen, who came tonight and talked to us basically about transparency, about accountability, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's time, as someone who's running a nonprofit, I think it's time for Barry Allen to give a full and total accounting to the public of his nonprofit. He's criticized Mr. Weaver throughout the years. He's been in business for quite a while, and I think that's the best way to describe it. It's a nonprofit, but it also appears to be his main business enterprise. I'd like to know what monies were given to this organization, a list of the checks. I asked Mr. Weaver the same thing. A list of the contributors to Vanguard or Vanguardians, and then a list of the checks that were written. That's real simple. You could do that tomorrow. You should be able to go write down the ledger and pick out or make copies of the people that contributed to Vanguard and also the checks that were written. Then I'd like him to go further, and I'd like him to give the public an accounting of the monies that were gathered for the Thompsons. He unsolicited by the Thompsons, as far as I know. He was soliciting money for the Thompsons' legal defense. I know he sent them a check, but haven't heard anything else about it. So I'd like to know who gave money to Mr. Barry Allen and his Vanguard's to turn over to the Thompsons', because evidently, they haven't received the full accounting yet. But at any rate, when you ask for transparency constantly, year after year after year, how about a little transparency from that nonprofit? I mean, nonprofits, to my way of thinking, are sort of in the public sphere, they're kind of in the public interest, so let's have an accounting from the Vanguardians. And Mr. Milano, since you're constantly contributing to his site, I would think you would get to the podium, and you would ask the same thing. You join me in asking Barry Allen to give an accounting of Vanguardians. It's been, it's been a few, few years now, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Right on, Mr. Mayor.
Well, according to state law, if a nonprofit makes less than $25,000 a year, they do not have to file the returns, show where the money went. According to the state report, he earned less than $25,000 last year. So there's only one piece of paper on file on the state that says he earned less than $25,000.
Right, but those are just, you know, laws, Mr. Weaver. Minimum requirements, right. It's a nonprofit--
I know. I mean, you can ask him to do the other, but he did make more than 25.
Yeah. But what'd still be interesting to know, you can literally look at the input into the, into his treasury, and he did refer to Mr. Milano as his colleague tonight. That's why I specifically, that's why I specifically mentioned Mr. Milano. Any other comments? Have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment? Let's see your tomorrow. Is there a motion? Or new business?
New business, yes.
All right. Oh. All right. Like to, I will move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law firm of Skadden Arps Slate Beeger Flom, that is Jack DiCanio, with respect to a matter involving Glendale Water and Power. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap.
Second?
Roll call. Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
I'm glad you got that one, because mine's a lot easier.
Ms. Weaver?
I'd like to move that the city attorney is hereby authorized to file a lawsuit against a third party. The third party shall be identified, and the nature of the litigation shall be disclosed to anyone making a request to receive said information upon the filing and service of said lawsuit. It's easier.
Roll call, please. Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
I'd now like to move where you adjourn.
Your second?
Second.